Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The July 15, 2009 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 10:00 PM. We make this cautionary announcement at each of our meetings, advising the public that this building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire-detection-and-suppression sprinkler system, so should alarms activate, please leave through the exits and wait until our marshals, who will be outdoors, tell you it's safe to return. We have no reason to believe this will take place, but we have to say this as a matter of caution. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given this morning by Reverend Bonnie Polly, Christ Episcopal Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
Let us pray. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise this morning for the recognition of the Employee of the Month, Senior of the Quarter, for the Public Works Department, and for this Three Square Food Bank. We especially give you thanks this morning for each one of our council members. We ask you to give them the Spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people, strengthen their efforts to blot out ignorance and prejudice, and to abolish poverty and crime, and hasten the day when all people will be united with dignity and in peace. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and Information Technologies to join us at the podium, and with them, of course, today, we're proud to announce that the July Employee of the Month is Jason Ellingson. Jason, thanks for joining us. Jason is a systems analyst with the Department of Information Technologies, and I have no idea what that means. I am computer illiterate, Jason. Joe, you haven't taught me a damn, pardon me, a darn thing in ten years.
I'm sorry.
All right, but Joe tells me that it's a very important job, and Jason's been with the city since 1997, and his work is a great example of how city employees come together to provide excellent service to the public. Teaming with the city attorney's office, Jason has helped to expedite the judicial process and make sure that those in the court system are served in an efficient manner. As a lawyer, I know how long and winding a journey through the court system could be, and a real pain, but with your help, with the city attorney's office on the pro-law interface that allows city attorneys to retrieve cases daily through the jail and municipal court computer systems, this makes it a lot easier for attorneys to process the defendants in a short amount of time, and time is money as far as lawyers are concerned, so that's very important. And you also have been working to ensure that the interface is compatible with the municipal court's new case management system that will begin operating later this year. You're great at providing excellent customer service, you've taken the initiative to really understand the issues that are facing another department at the city, and employ a solution that's now resulting in better service to the public, which is the reason for government in the first place to provide these kinds of services. So on behalf of the entire city council, we'd like to congratulate Jason on being named the July 2009 Employee of the Month. Time to, please. And along with this very, very nice plaque, Jason has received a $100 Visa gift card and compliments of the Nevada Federal Credit Union, and what happened? What happened to the gym?
It's there as well.
You sure?
Yes.
You gonna be able to go over there?
Check it out, yeah.
All right. No, because that's very important, that you stay in good shape.
My wife would agree.
And nobody knows that better than myself. So Jason, congratulations, that's great. Joe?
Congratulations. We're very proud of Jason. He's customer-service-oriented, he listens to understand, and that's essential for an analyst. He understands the business he's in, and he interprets that in a computer code, so that those things that citizens need can be done, and get you in and out of court as fast as we can, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jason, we're proud of you.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say thank you. I was really floored when I got it, and I do have to say, it just, it wasn't a lone effort. There are a lot of people in IT, as well as the city attorney's office, that helped me out with the project, and I do appreciate that, wanted to tell them thank you as well.
Thank you. All right, for our next item, we're going to recognize the Senior of the Quarter, and I'd like to ask Betty Evans, where are you, Betty, vice-chair of the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, to join us up here and to make the presentation. Good morning.
Good morning, and it's always a pleasure to recognize a senior in our community who is going above and beyond the call of duty. So this morning, I'd like to recognize Carolyn Potts. So Carolyn, could you come on up here?
No, Dan. Thank you, darling. Thank you, Mary.
So let me tell you a little bit about Carolyn. In addition to doing a superb job as the treasurer of the Levy Gardens Resident Council, Carolyn spends more than eight hours a day helping others. Eight hours a day. That's like a job, right? And this is a job she doesn't get paid for. What she does at that job is she's checking in residents, she's making sure that those that are homebound have food, she makes sure those that have come home from the hospital stay, taking their medications, know when they're supposed to do that, and she even helps them do some light housekeeping, maybe dusting or things of that nature. Carolyn has other volunteers that work with her preparing food for Saturday morning breakfasts, and what they have is an omelet café. Breakfast is often at a low or no cost to the seniors. Being single and eating alone can be really a very lonely event, so by sponsoring a hot meal and other food events at the Levy Garden, this allows our seniors to socialize with their neighbors and enjoy some food that they might not have otherwise. Carolyn is a caring and compassionate individual and an asset to our community. She delivers food to seniors that are homebound, makes bingo night fun and enjoyable to all of her residents. So Carolyn, I'd like to congratulate you as the Senior of the Quarter. But she told to me, talked to me before the meeting started and said, you know, I can't stay for the whole council meeting, because we have to get back, because we're going to feed 150 seniors for free today. So for lunch. Would you like to say something?
I sure would.
Okay.
Hello. I see some that's getting close to, I'm 75, so nah, no, no, there's nobody close as I am, old as I am, but you know what, Harry Levy Gardens is a wonderful place. I want to thank our Director of Operations, Zelda, Ellis is here. Good to see you, Ms. Ellis, and thank you for coming. (applause) I want to thank Maria Machuca for nominating me from Las Vegas Housing. Thank you, Maria. Some of my friends came with me today, this group right in front of Zelda there, they came to join me, but you know what? I told them I would make sure to get them back for lunch today. We're having, I'll even tell you our menu. We're having smothered chicken, salmon patties, peas and carrots, rice, cake, soda, or some sort of beverage, and lots of fun. We even do it, sometimes we do a little dancing and all. I do want to thank Councilman Barlow, which comes by most frequent calls, make sure we're all right if we need anything. Marvelous, marvelous. Thank you all, I appreciate it.
I will, I will. I think we'll recess the council meeting until after lunch. Great job. Okay, next item, Councilman Steve Ross is going to recognize the charitable efforts of a local organization. Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Honored, and Betty and Carolyn, thank you for your efforts in the community. That's a perfect segue into what I want to recognize today. Before I do, I want to bring up Julie Murray, the Executive Director of Three Square. Good morning, young lady. And as she stands up here with us, let me tell you what she does. Three Square is a food bank that provides wholesome food for hungry people. Three Square, which stands for Three Square Meals a Day, opened in December of 2007 with the vision that no one in our community should go hungry. They are a nonprofit organization dedicated to eliminating the growing hunger problem in the Las Vegas community. One in 10 households struggles to acquire food each day. Unfortunately, the children, our children, are hit the hardest. In Nevada, one in five children lives in households that are struggling for food, and nearly all of Clark County School District students qualify for free or reduced-priced meals. Many people think of hunger as a homeless issue. That is not true. Many working families have to make difficult decisions to pay bills or to feed their families. Three Square wants to help these families get back on their feet, so they don't have to make that difficult decision on feeding their families. Through the incredible support of donors, foundations, corporations, government entities, and private individuals within our community, Three Square has already made significant strides. In their first year of operation, Three Square Food Bank distributed 10.7 million pounds of food. This was unprecedented for a new food bank. Currently, Three Square helps 260 agency partners across southern Nevada, including food pantries, soup kitchens, homeless shelters, and youth and senior programs. They help 144 Clark County schools through the Backpack for Kids program, which provides shelf-stable, kid-friendly foods for nearly 4,000 students each Friday of the school year. They have 11 summer food service program sites, providing breakfast and lunch to low-income kids over the summertime. Three Square recently opened a state-of-the-art community kitchen, and will soon begin providing a prepared meal option for its agency partners. In mid-August, Three Square will be moving into its new, into the organization's new 70,000-square-foot building, which includes offices, a community meeting room, a new kitchen, and needed warehouse space to rescue, hold, and deliver food to those in need. Three Square has established 125 food rescue partners, which includes relationships with major grocery store chains across the valley, and that number is increasing weekly. This year, Three Square is set to distribute 13 million pounds of food, which equals more than 10 million meals. Unfortunately, estimates show the need for emergency food services in Clark County to be 49 million pounds per year, each year, which equal more than 38 million meals. It's amazing to see how people, how many people Three Square has been able to help in the two short years they've been open. Without Three Square, many people in this community would be suffering. Hunger is a very real problem, and I encourage and I challenge this community and local businesses and residents to help donate food, time, and/or money to this wonderful charity. And with that, I'd like to introduce Julie Murray. Julie, tell us more about it.
Thank you, Councilman. First and foremost, I want to thank the City Council and the Mayor, because without all of you, we wouldn't have been able to make the progress we're making. As I look at the faces of your councilmen, many of them have come down and have personally supported the Backpack program and many programs, and all I'll do is, just to keep this brief, is to echo that there's a great need for food in the community. This vibrant, wonderful city of Las Vegas is going through some challenges, but I truly believe that if all of us work together, that we'll get through them and will get through the many challenges that are making it difficult for children, families, and seniors. So thank you, Councilman, for your recognition of our food bank.
Thank you, Julie. Many of us on the council have had the opportunity to tour her facility in its state today, and it rivals the largest hotel-casino chain's operations of receiving goods and sending them back out the door, and that's the whole idea. This city, the Mayor and the City Council, like this organization, are always trying to do things for the people of this valley. I want to thank you personally, on behalf of the Mayor and the City Council, and today, the Mayor and the City Council of Las Vegas proudly proclaim July 15, 2009, as Three Square Day in the City of Las Vegas, and we ask our citizens to join us in thanking Three Square for their community support and commitment to help end hunger in Las Vegas. Congratulations.
We're going to have a giant birthday party. It's my birthday party, July the 31st, start about, what time?
6:00 PM.
About 6:00 PM, it's going to be down on Fremont Street at the First Street Stage, and we want everybody in the room here, everybody who's listening, to come down there. It's going to be a fundraiser, and one of the three charities that we're raising funds for, of course, is Three Square. And the admission fee, so to speak, is so minimal, there'll be an awful lot of my favorite beverage there, you'll be able to drink to excess, we'll have designated people to help you get home, there'll be food, there'll be entertainment from the strip, and it'll be for three great charities, one of which, as I say, is Three Square. We're looking forward to seeing everybody there. Thanks. Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask Jorge Cervantes, Sam Tolman, Michael Holloway, and Roy Davis to join us up here. I have no idea why. Jorge, you know what we're doing? Good.
Thank you, Mayor. We're up here today because we're very fortunate to have received a couple of awards from the American Public Works Association for two projects that we recently completed. One of them is the Buckskin Cliff Shadow Equestrian Park, and this is a park up in the northwest that affords our residents up there, that still live in some of the rural areas up there and have horses, an ability to have their horses to be able to pull in and use the trailhead and go into some of the trails that are being constructed up that already exist. This project was constructed by, or designed by WLB and constructed by Raphael Construction, and the second project is Hoover and Casino Center Streetscape, and this project's in our downtown area, and is part of our ongoing efforts to beautify, to clean up our downtown, to make our sidewalks more pedestrian-friendly, by widening sidewalks, adding streetscape elements, landscaping, and some other amenities. And so today, we have Michael Holloway with APWA that's going to present these awards to the City Council.
Thank you, Jorge. Jorge's great, he always talks about the projects, and then I don't have to talk about the projects, but I'm the president-elect of the Nevada chapter of the American Public Works Association, and twice a year, I seem to come and visit Las Vegas, because you have dedicated the funds required for our top-quality public works department, and because of that, you get top-quality public works projects, and you can be proud. Twice a year, Nevada APWA looks at public works projects, in the spring, we look at those below $10 million in construction costs, and in the fall, we look at those above $10 million in construction costs. And so what we're dealing with now are the less-than-10-million-dollar ones, and we have plaques here for Hoover Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard Streetscape Improvements for the City of Las Vegas Public Works, Transportation Project Under $5 Million for the Spring 2009 Conference. I have multiple copies because he wants one. And actually, this particular one, we had one, but on the other one is Buckskin Cliff Shadows Equestrian Park, again, structural project under $5 million, Mr. Ross wants another one, you know? And we have one for Raphael Construction, if they are here, they were going to be here to pick it up, and then for the city, you know, you can, you can hold both up, although, you know, Jorge's going to want to take those. And then the other one is for the Bureau of Land Management, who did the funding, and I have, I believe it's Steve Tryon is coming up for it. Okay. Thank you. So you didn't even have to pay for this one. The OLM paid for it. But anyway, the City of Las Vegas should be proud of its public works department, and you know, this is a town, until recently, the growth has required a lot of funding for capital improvement programs, and this city has been able to keep up, and I congratulate the City Council and the Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for being with us. As you know, one of our primary goals is to provide as much employment during these very challenging economic times as the city can, expending the public funds wisely on projects like these, which will make Las Vegas even a better place than it is. So we thank everybody who has participated in this process, and I'd be happy to pass the mic down, so if you want to identify yourselves, please, tell us your role. Sam?
Sam Tolman, project manager. There's several people in the audience, the consultant, WLB, et cetera, but we appreciate the opportunity of doing this project.
Roy Davis, Clark County Public Works, we work with Sam, what a great gentleman to work with. We put in the utilities and some of the street improvements for the road up there on the other side of Cheyenne, there was that Buckskin, and anyway, thanks for the opportunity for Clark County to participate.
Rosa Cortez, the Engineering Project Manager for the Hoover Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard Streetscape Improvement. I also have in the audience the engineer, Steve Hago and Dela Moser from Jacobs Engineering, who assisted with that project, and we're all very grateful to APWA for recognizing this project as Project of the Year.
Robert Nelson, Raphael Construction. I'll hand it over to our project manager that ran the project.
Jay Johnson, Project Manager, Raphael Construction. Just want to thank WLB, they did the design, and it was a great design, and Sam was great to work with, a great partnering job.
Steve Tryon with the Bureau of Land Management, and we manage a program that's based on sale of federal land, and we're at $1 billion and counting that we have been able to help local parks and trails in Clark County with by the sale of federal land. The Buckskin project is one of the many that are coming to fruition right now. It's a great example of connectivity with other parks and trails, and also a chance for partnership between the BLM, which manages the adjacent federal land, that many of the equestrian uses will take place on. So it's a great partnership, great to work with Councilman Ross and others on bringing these projects online.
Thank you very much. Okay, for our final item, I'd like to invite Chris Knight, the Director of the City's Building and Safety Department, to join us up here. Chris is going to tell us a little bit about a grant that the city is accepting to go towards free swimming lessons for our youngsters. Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. Morning, members of the council. Mr. Mike Bowes, who is the President of our Southern Nevada chapter of ICC, all right, thank you, was scheduled to do this presentation, but he's hurt his knee, so he's asked me to stand in for him. Explain a little bit about the Southern Nevada chapter of the International Code Council, or ICC. It's a group made up of building officials, building inspectors, people who work for the public sector and doing inspections on building. It's also made up of private contractors, consultants, and architects, and other individuals from the private sector, and the purpose of that group is to work with the development of model codes. Those codes are adopted by local units of government and are used in code enforcement to make sure that our built environment, our structures and our buildings are built in as safe a manner as possible, and safety is one of our primary concerns. When it comes to safety, pool safety is something that's very important to us, and in the past year so far, there have been 61 drowning-related calls to emergency services in Clark County. That includes Boulder City, Mesquite, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Henderson, and the unincorporated areas of the county. In May alone, we had 24 calls, in June, there were 14, and we're only halfway through the month of July, and there are already 14 calls related to drowning. Even one drowning is too much, too many, especially when it relates to toddlers, and toddlers ages four years and under. And in the last three years, there have been 29 toddlers that have drowned and lost their lives in backyard swimming pools. There were two in the month of June this year, and just last Saturday, there was another toddler drowning, and actually, in my neighborhood, and 29 toddlers is a whole classroom full of toddlers that we've lost to our community. While the chapter has promoted the adoption of the Southern Nevada Pool Code to protect children exposed to the hazards of backyard pools in new construction, there are still existing pools out there that don't have protection from those safety hazards. The chapter supported legislation at the last, this past legislative session to require safety improvements to existing pools. The legislature opted not to pass that legislation, so the chapter's decided to step forward and step to the plate and try to do something to help with pool safety, and that something is to provide a $1,500 grant to the City of Las Vegas and to all of the local government agencies to go towards scholarships for swimming lessons for toddlers four years of age and under, and we're dipping into the chapter funds, giving $1,500 for those lessons. We anticipate that those lessons, that $1,500, will pay for about 50 lessons for 50 toddlers in each community, and while it may not have an immediate impact, we certainly hope it has a long-range impact, and we challenge other agencies to step forward on swimming pool safety as the Southern Nevada chapter of ICC is doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
You can take a motion.
That's, it's a little hot, it's a little hot. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the applicant wish to be strictly or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor, pro temp.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 32 as award of contract number 090256-TM, annual requirement contract for water treatment and chemicals. That's your company of Nevada. Staffs have to strike that item. Item 46 is hearing to consider the appeal regarding the notice and declaration of chronic nuisance at 2001 Fremont Street, Unit 118. Harold G. Sweet, Jr., staffs have to strike that item also. Item 47, 48 is public hearing to recover costs for 901 West McWilliams Avenue and 1,001 West McWilliams Avenue. Owner, Moulin Rouge Properties LLC, and 840 West Bonanza Road and 920 West Bonanza Road. Owner, Las Vegas Department Lenders LLC. We'd like to have this, we'd like to have that held in abeyance until our August the 5th, 2009 meeting. Item 52 is report on relation between the City of Las Vegas and employee organizations of June the 8th, 2009, and the regular city council meeting of June 17th, 2009. Is there a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Yes, Your Honor. No, this is a relation, and I would like to accept the minutes as read.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. Items 12 through 45, with the exception of item 32, which was stricken, are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward at this time?
Your Honor, if I may, not necessarily to bring forward, but an agenda item 24. I must disclose that one of my staff members works for the engineering firm. That's my disclosure, and let the record reflect, I'll be abstaining from that agenda item.
Very good. Are there any others that the council wishes to bring forward at this time?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull item 12 and item 35, please.
All right, 12 and 35, all right. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know about 13.
13, we'll hear that, too. Okay, thank you. Let's call item number 12, then. Well, do we have a motion on this? Okay, fine.
Your Honor, I make a motion to approve items 14 through 45, with the exception of, well, 12 through 45, with exceptions of 12, 13, and 35, with all conditions, please.
All right, thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we'll call item number 12, which is approval of the First Amendment to the Centennial Grant Agreement between the Commission for the Las Vegas Centennial and 300 Stewart Avenue Corporation for additional grant funds of $300,000 for the Las Vegas Museum of Organized Crime and Law Enforcement located at 300 Stewart Avenue. This is in Ward 5.
I have nothing to add. I just wanted an up or down vote. I just wanted a separate vote on it. Nothing else to add.
All right.
Can I make a comment on this?
Yes, certainly.
In reference, we've had our Centennial Committee. We've kept it going, and the funds we received from the sales of our Centennial License plates continue to fund some of these programs. And this Centennial Committee recommended and passed this $300,000 from our committee to go towards this museum, and I feel like it's in order.
All right, thank you. That was a motion?
Yes.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post? You got it? All right. Very good. Thank you. All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 13 is approval of an interlocal agreement by and between the Clark County School District, a political subdivision of the State of Nevada, the district, and the City of Las Vegas, a city, a municipal corporation of the State of Nevada concerning a contribution of $5 million for the construction of the Smith Center for the Performing Arts located at the southwest corner of Symphony Park Avenue and City Parkway within the Symphony Park Master Plan Development. This is in Ward 5. Did you have a concern about that?
Yes, I do.
What is it?
I'm not, is the school district giving this money to Smith Center? And why?
Because they're going to have a educational facility as part of the Smith Center, and the school district will be able to have its youngsters attend that educational facility.
So you think that'll be, the family would be better used there than for the, used in the school system?
Well, the school system is the one who requested to do it. They're the ones who are interested in having this program. Mr. Arnt, or Mr. Martin, would you like to add to what I said?
Mayor Bill Arnt, Acting Director, Office of Business Development. We do have with us today Myron Martin with the Las Vegas Performing Arts Center Foundation. His organization has been working with the school district on a pretty extensive partnership, so I'll invite Mr. Martin to come up and address the question.
All right, Mr. Martin. Let me lay this woman's.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Myron Martin, 241 West Charleston. We're really quite proud of our partnership with the Clark County School District. Long before we opened the Smith Center, we've been dedicating funds and resources and human resources towards the business of education and outreach. We've been putting musicians and actors and dancers in the schools for free. We've been paying for school buses so that our kids can be inspired. Our superintendent, Walt Rolfus, calls the Smith Center "the largest classroom in Nevada." The school district is clearly behind the work that we're doing. He understands that when we have those 2,050 seats, that we're gonna provide educational opportunities for our community that we've never seen before. And I often tell my fourth grade story about getting goosebumps in the fourth grade because of how I was inspired in a performing arts center. And the irony is, my daughter is gonna be in the fourth grade, in the first year of operation at the Smith Center, and I expect that she and many of her classmates and kids around the valley are gonna be inspired as well. The specific use of this money comes from capital improvement money from a former budget from the school district that cannot be used for teachers, for pencils, for educational materials. It must be used for facilities. It must be used for facilities. And the school district came up with the plan to help us build our classrooms and our education building because they know how important this is to their efforts. So we applaud them, we thank them, and I thank the City Council for being a part of this extraordinary gift from the Clark County School District.
Thank you very much. All right, have a motion, please. Councilmember Barlow.
Yes, Mayor. I would like to move for approval of this item subject to all conditions.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? For some reason, I think my little arrow, where's that arrow? Get down here. Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 35 is approval of the creation of a full-time, regular, major projects development manager position for the city manager's office to manage major projects to include but not limited to the new city hall, the Smith Center for the Performing Arts, and the Museum of Organized Crime and Law Enforcement. Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. I was briefed on this by Mr. Adams, and I appreciate what he had to say, but it just seems to me like we have a lot of people working on all these projects, and I just am not convinced that we need to spend another $100,000-plus benefits to hire somebody else to come in and continue to manage this. We have a lot of great people working on these projects. I just don't think we need to spend that kind of money, so I'm opposed funding this position.
Mr. Adams, could you address that, please?
Sure. Scott Adams, the city manager's office. We have three projects that we would put this individual on, and if I could itemize, we have a performing arts center, which is roughly $300 million. We have a proposed city hall, which would be another $150 million, and we have a mob museum, which would be about another $40 million. We think it's, it is definitely in the city's best interest to have a project manager working out of the city manager's office, to spearhead and coordinate and orchestrate all the various departments and outside agencies that are working on those projects to ensure that our public dollars are spent most effectively, and we avoid any project overruns and problems associated with managing those projects. It's a half a billion dollars with the projects, and it's, we think prudent management to have a direct pipeline of communication between the various entities involved in those projects in the city manager's office, a clear line of communication, make quick decisions, and move projects forward.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wilson.
Mayor Governor, Scott, putting it in simpler terms, do you think that by having a projects manager like this, over three potential major projects will save the city money in the long run?
And that's the other thing that, I've actually, just in my involvement so far on the city hall project, I've identified a number of areas of opportunity to save dollars. Where you come in at a very high level, look at the project from a outside perspective, and, you know, kind of look at the forest instead of down in the trees, and really create an opportunity to not only save money, but identify issues that downstream could create problems and actually cost the city money. So I think there's both ends of that. You're not only looking at opportunities to save money, but you're avoiding issues, you're identifying issues early to avoid additional costs later on.
And this is for three separate projects, not just one?
That's correct. We have two projects immediately, and that's why we've elected to go forward with this, regardless of the decision of city hall. This project's funded out of the redevelopment agency. I need to make that point. It's not coming from the city's general fund. And we have the Performing Arts Center and the mob museum, which will happen, well, the Performing Arts Center's under construction, the mob museum is imminent. So we have the workload immediately to get started, and there's an immediate need to get this person on board and working.
Scott, do you know if, when the R J C was constructed, whether the county had what we're calling a project development manager?
No. I, that predates me because it was completed right when I came on board here, but, you know, the parallel here is.
I think Mrs. Fredwell has the answer to that.
It's my understanding that they had a deputy county manager who was responsible for the project.
Which turned out to be a disaster.
That's what I was gonna say.
Absolute disaster. Okay, so we're gonna avert a disaster by this.
Your Honor, if I may, Mr. Adams, would you explain to the public or the process of finding this individual to do this kind of work? I've had inquiries.
Yeah, that, I think that's.
About prospective opportunities of employment, so.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've looked at, you know, I think the first logical response would be, well, don't we have somebody on board already that can do that kind of thing? And we've looked very carefully at our current staff array, and we really don't have this expertise on board in the city, or we wouldn't have come forward with this. We looked at all the different ways he could do this. We looked at hiring an outside consultant versus bringing somebody on board. This is the most cost-effective way to do it, bring somebody on board, avoiding all the overhead and all the expense of a consultant. Plus, we have total control over this individual. That individual represents the city in any of the project management issues that might come up. We're also at a very opportune time in the history of the valley in terms of the real estate and construction industry. We've had a very healthy response to our recruitment for this position, and we have a very, a good complement of persons' interests in the position with a broad background of construction and real estate project management experience.
Your Honor, again, if I may, how did that process happen? Did you advertise for this position?
Yes, we did. This was an open, public response. We probably had 80 applications. We've been in the process of phone and face-to-face interviewing, winnowing that down to a group of finalists, and we're in that evaluation as we speak.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Have a motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor.
Before the motion, please, I have a question, a couple of questions for Mr. Scott Adams. What happens with the, with the position once the projects are built out? Is this a full-time employee? Is it temporary? Do we have an opportunity to eliminate that position after the projects are built out?
Well, one of, yeah, I think one of the advantages and one of the reasons of putting the funding in the redevelopment agency budget is there's an opportunity then, depending, the longest project that this person would be involved in is the Performing Arts Center, which should have a duration of nearly three years. So at the end of that tenure of employment, we would be able to evaluate downstream whether or not there's some benefit of keeping this person on board. I think we're gonna office this person probably in the redevelopment agency, and then there would be the ability to even have this person get involved in other projects the city's involved. So I think we're gonna get a lot of bang out of the city's buck, out of the redevelopment agency's dollars of having this person onboarding and using this person in a wide variety of opportunities.
So have we considered the, have we considered the opportunity for a contract then versus full-time?
At this point, we're looking at putting this person on the payroll. That's what we're doing here.
I understand that, but I'm saying, have we considered contracting it, being that at the end of all the projects being completely built out? I'm looking at it from the long haul. Once all the projects are built out, we still have this individual on the payroll.
And this, Fredwell?
Maybe before we go down the contracting route, because we have looked at that issue with various consulting firms, I'll let Scott address that. This is an appointed position, which means it's at will. If there's no work for them to be doing, they will not be on our payroll.
We've been very transparent, clear to all the candidates that the opportunity is a three-year opportunity. There may be forward opportunity beyond that, but it's, we've been pretty clear that there's a three-year period of opportunity here.
Your Honor? Councilwoman Wilson brought up the R J C, the Regional Justice Center. The city and the county went in together to build this. They thought we could build it cheaper than we could get it done in the private industry. As it turned out, the City of Las Vegas wasn't even welcome at the site during the construction. They wouldn't let our building department in on the site. It's about $55 million overbudgeted as we speak today, and there's litigation going on right now for probably $4,000 at least, mistakes that was made in the building. It was, probably took two years longer to build than it was supposed to be built. And I believe if we would have had somebody like this on the scene, this might not have happened. It probably wouldn't have happened. It's been brought up that the largest, the longest case he's gonna be overseeing is the Performing Arts Center. But hopefully, by that time, we'll have other projects within the redevelopment agency that they would be able to look at then to see if this guy was qualified, or the person was qualified, to stay on and see how, what kind of job he was doing. And also, the money is coming out of the R D A, not to capital projects. And again, I feel like it's gonna be money well spent for the City of Las Vegas, and especially the R D A, and the money that's gonna be saved by them being on site and being able to take care of those issues that arise each and every day.
And Mayor Protem, if anybody questions what you just said, go over to the R J C right now and try to catch an elevator. Okay, we have a motion.
My motion would be follow staff's recommendation. We will decide.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Item number 49 is a public hearing on a three-month review for the vacant or abandoned buildings located at 4152 Silver Dollar Avenue, Units 2, 4, 5, 7, 8; 4168 Silver Dollar Avenue, Units 1 to 4; 6 to 8; 4186 Silver Dollar Avenue, Units 1 to 7. The property owners are R F H La Paz LLC, and these are on Board 1. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. As you said, this is a review of a project in a case that we've had ongoing for quite some time. I just wanted to read a couple things onto the record. Since the last meeting, at 4152, Unit 2, 4, 7, and 8 have been final inspected by the City of Las Vegas. 4168, Units 2, 3, and 8 have had final inspections on those units. There are still some vacant units at this property that are yet to be inspected, but currently there is no violation because they are not occupied. We have a couple outstanding violations that we've gone over with the property owner. Water protection device for landscape sprinkler needs to be installed on 4186 Silver Dollar. Sewer cleanout needs to be raised to grade with protective box covered and installed on 4152 Silver Dollar. We have a few other issues that have arose since the last briefing on this council. We've had. Post. Motion carriers, thank you. Item number forty-nine is a public hearing on a three-month review for the vacant or abandoned buildings located at forty-one fifty-two Silver Dollar Avenue, units two, four, five, seven, eight, forty-one sixty-eight Silver Dollar Avenue, units one to four, six to eight, forty-one eighty-six Silver Dollar Avenue, units one to seven. The property owners are RFH La Paz LLC and these are onboard one. This is a public hearing, which I now declare open.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. As you said, this is a review of a project in a case that we've had ongoing for quite some time. I just wanted to read a couple of things onto the record. Since the last meeting, at forty-one fifty-two, unit two, four, seven, and eight have been final inspected by the city of Las Vegas. Forty-one sixty-eight, units two, three, and eight have had final inspections on those units. There are still some vacant units at this property that are yet to be inspected, but currently there is no violation because they are not occupied. We have a couple outstanding violations that we've gone over with the property owner. Water protection device for landscape sprinkler needs to be installed on forty-one eighty-six Silver Dollar. Sewer cleanout needs to be raised grade with protective box covered and installed on forty-one fifty-two Silver Dollar. We have a few other issues that have arose since the last briefing on this council. We've had a couple of times that the residents at this location have called because the gas meters...
Yes. Devin, could you explain what we have here? How many units do we have? There used to be apartments, they was transferred over, they turned into condominiums. One owner, the owner we're talking about today owns, I think seventeen of those units.
He owns the majority of them, yes. They were apartments at one time that have been converted to condominiums. The only individual utilities that they have on each unit is power. The gas and the water is controlled by the majority owner.
Yes, okay.
And we've had two, two incidents that we have been called out onsite because residents at this location have had their gas meters red-tagged, which means within twenty-four hours they were going to lose their gas. We contacted the property owner, he made current payment on it and we avoided that catastrophe. We have had, we've issued citations to the individual. It is currently in the municipal court system. The next court date is nine twenty-three of oh-nine. Any questions, any comments you'd like answered, I, at this time, I'd feel free to ask them and I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions to Mr. Smith at this time? Folks, a public hearing, as I indicated, would anyone like to be heard?
Is your honor present? Would you honor?
Would you be kind enough to come up and identify yourself, please, for the record?
Yes, good morning, your honor. Fellow city council, Rex Henriott. I'm the sole member of RFH La Paz, the majority owner of the condominiums that we're talking about today. I want to thank Mr. Smith's office. I've worked with them for the past year. I mentioned in the, the last meeting that I was, that I was at three months ago, that when I, when these, this property was under review and being scrutinized prior to my ownership. I took over ownership almost a year to the date in August of oh-eight and since then I've worked with the Office of Code Enforcement and worked tirelessly to address each issue and, and make it a better place for the community, so.
Thank you. All right.
We, we have abatement costs that have arisen to twenty-nine thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and you haven't paid one penny on the abatement costs. Plus, the civil penalties has been accruing, are still accruing today.
Well, I finished all the capital improvements to the property in the, in the past year, put in over fifty thousand dollars. And that's my next, my next project is to pay off the civil penalties. I'm doing it as fast as I can. I'm not a wealthy individual and I'm just trying to, you know, achieve the American dream here with, with property ownership. But I, I'm in this for the long haul and I, and I plan to...
How many, how many other properties do you own in the city of Las Vegas?
How many other properties? Zero.
Clark County.
Well, I, I'm just zero.
Pardon?
Zero.
Zero?
Your honor, he manages other properties.
I'm a man, I'm a licensed property manager, real estate agent, but I don't own any other...
These are ones you own then?
Yes, sir.
This has been going on for over a year, the problems we've had out there and we, we, the city, we're not rich either. We go out and it costs us to go out there and try to get these problems corrected and abated and we're, you know, we're, we're running out of time and patience and it just continues. And I would like to see, maybe if I can, your honor, in the next forty-five days, to see how much of a dent we can make into this twenty-nine thousand two hundred thirteen dollars abatement costs that we have at this time. And at that time, I believe that if you show us that you're really working hard and trying to do what you're saying you're doing, then maybe we can look at the civil penalties that keep accruing each and every day.
Okay.
What we have done in the past, basically that's what the Mayor Protem is perhaps suggesting, we've had people in your place meet with Mr. Smith and work out a payment schedule and which both sides believe is reasonable under the circumstance and if in fact you abide by it, that goes a long way as far as our judgment is concerned.
Yes, sir.
I would ask that he also meets with Councilman Tarkanyan's office to work out this payment schedule also and satisfy them and what they feel like is right also. So I'm going to make a motion that the civil penalties will still be accruing at this time. I would ask that we have another hearing in forty-five days, which would be...
September sixteenth.
What day?
September sixteenth.
September the sixteenth of this year. And I would like to see something, some, on the twenty-nine thousand two hundred thirteen that we made some advance to get that paid off in the next forty-five days.
Okay.
That's my motion, your honor.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post.
Thanks, Devin.
Motion carries, thank you. Item fifty is a public hearing and possible action. Before I do that, I'd like to introduce some visitors that we have from Iverson Elementary. Would the youngsters please stand? Okay, is this a twenty-four, twelve-month school, is that right? And they're in their summer session? And who's in charge? What's your name?
I'm Shawnee Edwards and this is Suzie Morton. We're the advisors of the Iverson's.
Why don't you come on up here and tell us a little bit about who we have with us today?
We're very glad to be here today. Iverson Elementary actually does not fall within the bounds of the city. We are just to the east on the county by Sunrise Mountain. But we, as a student council, realize the importance of city government and we figured that Mayor Goodman has a pretty well-known face and that the students would respond perhaps more to that than to the, than to the county commission and so we, we brought them here. So we thank you for having us today.
I'll stipulate to that.
The students have, have little book lists that they, that Ms. Morton prepared for them where they're looking for the votes that are taken and how the structure of the council runs. They've got all of your pictures so they can see which ones of you are, are here today. And we just thank you for your work on behalf of our city.
Well, that's very nice. We appreciate that. And just so the youngsters know, Councilwoman Tarkany would be here, but she has a health issue as far as her family's concerned and appropriately she's with that family member. So forgive her for not being here today, but we'd love to have you and looking forward to speaking to you at some point in time to get your impression as to how we're doing.
Thank you. And Mayor Goodman, we do have a hat for you from Iverson Elementary.
I need a hat.
Your honor, if I could...
Can somebody bring up the hat?
Ma'am, could you tell us who the school's been named after? I think that is important.
Mervyn Iverson was a former administrator in the Clark County School District. He's currently working as a financial advisor, I believe, for the school district and is quite well-known throughout the, the area of town. I know he's worked with a textbook company locally also here and a financial group of some sort. Wonderful man and very involved in the school.
And what's the young lady's name who just delivered the cap?
This is Bryn Hardy. She's our historian. She'll be taking pictures today.
Very good, Bryn, welcome.
Thank you.
We're glad to have you. What grade are these youngsters then?
These kids are in first through fifth grade.
Very good. You're certainly welcome here and we appreciate you being here and I'm going to wear the hat once I get it. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, and what grade are you in?
I'm in fourth grade.
And what does a, what does a historian do?
We go to assemblies and take pictures of some of the performers and we have to take notes sometimes. And on our last meeting, I was the only representative there, so I had to control the meeting and it was a disaster.
Well, good job. How do I look?
Good.
Very handsome?
Yes.
I didn't ask you to laugh, I said, how do I look? I love this guy, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Nice having you here. Okay, item number fifty is a public hearing and possible action to consent to and approve the issuance of private activity bonds by the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Pima. Metro Police Facility Lease Revenue Bond Series 2009 and Subordinate Series 2009B to finance a proposed Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department headquarters to be located at the northwest corner of Martin Luther King Boulevard at Altidrive and Ward Five. I'm going to have to abstain from this because the developer, Mark Fine, or companies that he's associated with is a partner of mine in a real estate investment that we have on Les Charleston, which is being used by UNC as an outpatient facility. So I'll turn this over to...
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could just make a quick disclosure, I was a police officer and a police captain for the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department for twenty-nine years. When I was elected to the Las Vegas City Council, I retired from Metro and no longer have any contractual or employment affiliations with that organization. As such, I believe that my independence of judgment will not be compromised and I will be voting on item number fifty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
And Mayor Protem?
Yes.
And I must also disclose, your honor, that my role as a secretary treasurer of the Southern Nevada Building and Construction Trades Council, my organization is in discussions with the company I believe that will be building this property, so that's my disclosure and I will be abstaining from this item.
Thank you.
City Attorney, do we have enough, with the ability to vote on this? City Attorney there?
No, we don't. I'm sorry, I'm juggling about four things right now. Yes, that's correct. We gave the disclosure to the Councilman and we're in agreement that that's sufficient.
No, I appreciate that, but I, I've had to abstain. Councilman Ross has abstained. That leaves one, two, three, four here. Can they, can they vote?
I think we ought to trail this item for a few minutes because I fear what we're running up against here is a state law that is going to require abstention and if it's abstention under two eighty-one A, then I need to give you a written opinion in advance. If you have that written opinion, we can reduce the size of the governing body so we can still have a vote and it could perhaps pass.
We'll, we'll...
But I would recommend trailing this right now.
We'll trail this item until Mr. Jervis gets back to having his coffee.
Could I recommend, just out of safety, and I don't mean to inconvenience anyone, but in order to sit down and do this properly, it's going to take some time. I think that if you could trail it to the first item at the beginning of the afternoon session, that would be...
I said, until you get through drinking your coffee.
Thank you.
We'll trail this till the first item this afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. At your request of our attorney.
Mayor? Thank you. Item fif, do we need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay. Item fifty-one is report and possible action on Newland Communities Symphony Park Business Plan for Fiscal Year 2010 for Symphony Park located at one hundred South Grand Central Parkway in Ward Five. Mr. Arndt?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Bill Arndt, Acting Director, Office of Business Development. This item before you today is to hear a report on the business plan for Symphony Park. As you may recall, the city council has already approved the budget for fiscal year 2010, this current fiscal year. And as a result, this is really just meant to update you on some key items, including goals and objectives for marketing, land disposition, financials, where we're at with the master plan, including the park in the center of the campus, and where we're moving ahead in terms of community governance. With me today is Rita Brandon from Newland Communities in our project manager role and Rita will be giving you a brief PowerPoint presentation of some of the key goals for the upcoming fiscal year.
All right, very good. Thank you, Ms. Brandon.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Arndt, and good morning, city council and mayor. The project management agreement between Newland Communities and City Parkway Five requires that we submit on an annual basis a business plan to set forth our goals and strategies for the various areas I'm going to touch on briefly today. That plan is, has, was submitted at the first quarter and I'm not going to go through it page by page. It is over ninety pages with exhibits and narrative describing our activities for the 2010 fiscal year. After your consideration and hopefully approval today, it will be available on the website for the city of Las Vegas under the Redevelopment Agency where our prior business plan resides today. Excuse me. This one, Bill?
Yes.
Just briefly, I'd like to point out that we, every year as we begin our business planning, we stay in the context of the vision for Symphony Park. This is a summarized version of our vision, but simply you see on the page that we see it as a harmonious blend of diverse developments, which together as a whole will create the first modern-day neighborhood in Las Vegas. Our achievements to date briefly, while there have been many more than you see on the screen, these are, I think, key points to put on the public record. There have been commitments secured for twelve development parcels since the 2006 inception of the project and that's twelve parcels of the original eighteen outlined in the master plan. We've completed phase one infrastructure improvements, hard costs only, of eight point five, seven million. They're out there in place today. We recently received your approval for renaming and rebranding of the projects. Out of that will come several tactics that we'll undertake for 2010 fiscal year in marketing. Our phase two infrastructure improvements design is completed at ninety-nine percent, needs that final one percent of MYLAR update, but we have priced it out and that hard cost for the second phase will be approximately eight point four four million. Bill pointed out earlier that you have previously approved the budget for that second phase of infrastructure. And then importantly, we've also secured alternative financing and funding in principle and agreement for the commitment of the design and construction of the core area of the park in the central area of Symphony Park. One of the things that we have continuously focused on in our activities with staff in the Office of Business Development is retaining the, the vision of the, and the approved entitlements of the master plan. I have a picture of that master plan up in front of you today. We have a number of those commitments in the context of our vision with world-class developers, two of which are in some form of completion of buildings. Obviously, the Lou Revo Cleveland Clinic Institute for Brain Health is opened for business on Monday for their first patient and they're continuing their construction on their Activity Center due to be completed early 2010. And the Smith Center for the Performing Arts is deeply in construction today, having almost completed their excavation and their peer drillings. Each one of our partners are committed to the long-term vision and their participation at Symphony Park. The key moving forward is to secure additional developers to round out our mix on, on the project. The 2010 key goals and strategies begin with the project financials. As just mentioned, the financial aspects of the 2010 plan have been approved by you already. The, what we call Newland Managed Budgets, that's the portion of the funding that we contract on your behalf, manage consultants with, both design, engineering, and other. There is a marketing budget, which is actually a fifteen-month budget as part of that plan and then legal and operations whereby we engage in some, in some operational and legal consulting, outside consultants. Importantly, phase two budgets, which is what I'll call more of the hard costs and design, includes remediation funds to cover the Performing Arts Center, those funds necessary for the park, A2 and J parcels, construction utilities with the five point nine million. The funding that I mentioned earlier for the core part of Symphony Park that we've secured outside of the city funding, that there's two areas of that park that we have budgeted future funds that will come from the, the bonds and that's M1 and M2 on Symphony Park. And then the site security, temporary parking, striping, and lighting and then public works as a, as a construction manager. Land disposition is the key focus. In today's economic climate, it is, it is, I will call, tough to get new commitments. However, we will be focusing this year on parcels BJ, K, and A2. The site plan you see in front of you, the designated colors are, the yellow are those parcels that are in committed development agreements. The red parcels are those that will be focusing our marketing and developer discussion activities on for the balance of the fiscal year. And then the parcels in blue and in, which is L and O2, are those two parcels that Newland gave back to the city in the negotiation of our development extension agreement, which will be subject of a focus in future fiscal years. Our key focus today will be to round out the commitment of the Revo Brain Institute and Cleveland Clinic's commitment on that medical portion of the site. We have been very engaged in several marketing and conference-related development conferences recently where we have gleaned some very strong interest from national medical office developers who are aware of the Cleveland Clinic collaboration with, with Revo Brain Institute. So we'll be bringing that in front of you hopefully by the early fall to, to be able to get some additional commitments on the site. Marketing and public relations, I won't go through bullet by bullet, but the key, the key strategy here is that we need to continue to reinforce Symphony Park as a brand and as an important part of downtown's redevelopment, especially in this particular economic climate. The ongoing marketing communications, which will be business to business to other development entities as well as to our general public, so they understand what we're doing, the progress of construction on the site, both from a private development perspective as well as an infrastructure perspective. Phase development and project... Phase development and project schedule included in the expanded business plan that will be available on the city's website will be all of our actual project schedules that indicate starts, commencements of infrastructure construction, as well as commencements of—the developers themselves. One of the new items that we'll be working with staff very closely on this year is the commencement of the design of the bridge between the new city hall parking garage, which is to be cross-east on the tracks. I think I saw an item in consent today about that. And parcel L, which will be that pedestrian opportunity to—to have the traffic flow between downtown, core downtown, and Symphony Park. We'll continue to plan and pursue financing for a potential future public parking structure at Symphony Park, and we'll continue to refine the site management plan. The master plan, as I said earlier, it's very important that we retain its integrity. There will be several items that we undertake this year. We are going to come before Planning Commission as well as Council to re-entitle parcel J, which was previously entitled as a hotel parcel. We're going to be making a recommendation with a potential developer that we bring to you for approval in an ENA that we re-entitle that to Medical Office. Alternatively, then, we will ask for relocation to parcel B for a hotel site. Then parcel O-two will be re-entitled to remove the residential component and to allow for future commercial. Symphony Park, the park aspect, we have finished the park design through schematic design, through funding from the Reynolds Foundation. We will pick that design process back up and go all the way to a bid level and hopefully an award toward the construction of Symphony Park later in 2010 fiscal—annual year. But most of that design and bid process will occur in this fiscal year. We also will move forward and finalize agreements, operating agreements, as well as design and construction agreements with—the Reynolds Foundation and the Smith Center. Our design guidelines are continuing livable guidelines for the project as we've utilized them in our approval process with our developers. We—things have occurred where we're streamlining the process a bit more. We'll be bringing those guidelines back for further refinement approval. And then finally, Bill mentioned community governance. In the past, we've communicated that at full build-out, Symphony Park will be a private community. One of the overarching needs in a private community is that you create an association. We have done all of the drafting of documents for the Symphony Park Owners Association. We've worked through assessment methodologies that are part of those—that charter in those documents. We'll finalize those documents, bring those forward for your approval. And subsequent, as the—acquisitions occur with each one of the blocks and the private developments, we'll begin those assessments. So with that, that's a very broad overview, and as I—as I said, there is a lot of detail in the business plan. But I would request your consideration and approval of our work product for fiscal year 2010.
Thank you very much, Ms. Arndt.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make two quick comments, one for the public in the listening audience and then one for you and the council regarding the motion. For the public, just for their benefit, we are just receiving the report for the business plan today. You've already approved in the past the funding for this upcoming fiscal year. I just thought it was important for the public to know that we are not spending any general fund dollars for the capital funding or for the project management of Symphony Park. Essentially, it's self-funded within the project from both redevelopment agency dollars as well as from private capital. We are selling the private parcels in Symphony Park for—for—for money that would go back into the project. And then, second, as far as the motion today, we're asking that you accept the report. There's no funding approval. So just wanted to clarify that the motion today would be to accept the report.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Are there any questions, Ms. Brandon or Mr. Arndt? All right, they have a motion, please.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to move to accept the report as given by Ms. Rita Brandon and Bill Arndt.
All right, that's—excuse me? Okay, there's a motion by Councilman Barlow. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item fif— is—are the parties on item fifty here, or did they leave in anticipation of having that addressed as the first item this afternoon? Did they left? Okay, fine. All right. Item fifty-three is report and possible action regarding an update on the City of Las Vegas Interdepartmental ARA. That's A-R-R-A. Committee findings and activities on the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of 2009. This pertains to all wards. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be giving a summary of where we're at with applying for and receiving funds from the Recovery Act, also known as ARA. Going to go through department by department, some of the applications that we're seeking. I would note that for the NSP-2 grant that is being worked on by Neighborhood Services, there is a separate agenda item for that, so you'll be hearing that later today. In summary, we have a few changes. We're going to highlight some of the changes between when we spoke to you last and today. The allocation to our state was increased by roughly $600 million, from $1 billion to $1.6 billion. I would note that this does not necessarily mean an increase in dollars to the City of Las Vegas. Those funds are being dispersed from the state, and it doesn't necessarily relate to a dollar-for-dollar increase. We are estimating through the state right now and through recovery.org, which is a website devoted to ARA, that there will be thirty-four thousand jobs generated from this state funding. Again, these jobs aren't in place today. This is just a projection or an estimate. The actual job impact to the city is still to be determined. The city has actually increased its amount of funding that we're seeking. We have an interdepartmental team led by Romeo Betty, the Economic Development Manager for Business Development. And we've increased the amount of funding we're seeking from $186 million to roughly $213 million. So we are being aggressive and trying to seek out as much funding as possible to benefit the city.
Mr. Arndt, I gotta—I have to stop you. I really do. I don't want people to start salivating and spending the money that Mr. Arndt is talking about that we're applying for because right now I have to advise the public that Washington has been very, very generous in making sure that Las Vegas got our share of the stimulus monies in order to address this very challenging, challenging economy. We have deposited a total of $4,833 in stimulus funds into our account. So I—I love the fact that you're reporting as to what we're trying to get, but right now, Washington has really come to our aid. They've sent us $4,833. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Allocation summary for Nevada, you can see how it's broken out by some of the major groups. You see, education got a lot of funding. Of course, that doesn't directly benefit the city, but education in the state and in the city. You also see transportation and community development, economic development, and housing getting large allocations as well as social services. Some of the city efforts, department by department, our Neighborhood Services Department is going after funding for homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program, seeking an allocation of $2.1 million. They've already submitted a plan to HUD. We are awaiting approval. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program Two, this is a continuation of a prior program, and the City of Las Vegas is seeking a large allocation. I'm not going to go into any significant detail in this, as we do have a separate agenda item on this morning's council. Neighborhood Services will be presenting in some detail what they're doing with this program. I would mention they are seeking the funding under a consortium with some of our other local jurisdictions. Public Works, block rent, Neighborhood Services, we're seeking an allocation of $1.38 million. This would potentially create fourteen full-time equivalent employees and retain two part-time jobs. We've submitted plans to HUD, and we're still trying to find out exactly what funding we've received from that application. Public Works, transportation allocation, the Federal Highway Administration has a good share from the federal funding. And you can see the funding breakdown there. You see the Nevada share and the Southern Nevada share, as well as the share to NDOT. So the Southern Nevada share could directly benefit some of our programs for roads and highways within the city. And you see the share there of $40 million for Southern Nevada. Some of the specific projects in Southern Nevada, highway projects, $10 million. We're seeking funding through Public Works for repaving and rehabilitation projects, including Stewart Avenue, some repaving on Alexander Road, Durango Drive, Hill Center, and Lamb Boulevard. Some traffic improvement projects, you see the list there, Rancho Palomino, Vegas Drive, Pueblo Vista, Washington, and Comstock Bonanza Sonopaw, as well as traffic signals. Again, I'd reiterate what the mayor said, that we have not yet received this funding. This is just funding we're seeking. RTC is seeking a pretty large amount of funding for the Downtown Transportation Center. As you know, we're attempting to relocate that from its current location into the live-work-for-city campus, and they're seeking to apply some of that funding for the Downtown Transportation Center, which would—which would be moved from its current location over to near Main and Bonneville. You also see the Northwest Park and Ride Program, as well as the ACE Rapid Transit System. As you know, we're working to open a leg in downtown. The RTC is also seeking funding to connect the ACE system in downtown to Boulder Highway. You see the Tiger Grant, or Transportation Investment, generating economic recovery, a big amount we're seeking out of the federal allocation. The Sahara Avenue Bus Rapid Transit, if you're familiar with the plans of the RTC, they're seeking to run bus rapid transit down the entire Sahara Avenue corridor from the east end of the valley to the west end of the valley. The majority of that—that transit would be within the city limits. And so that's a discretionary grant that the RTC and Public Works are coordinating to participate on for that project. Planning and development, we're seeking funding to support a sustainable energy strategy. There's also a PowerPoint on that today, so I'm not going to go into a lot of detail on that. It's involved a lot of regional coordination with Neighborhood Services, with HUD, Humphrey Nevada Program, the SNRPC, as well as the Workforce Investment Board. The—also through planning and development, we're seeking funding for a state energy program for weatherization, also community energy projects, and public facilities. And I think Mr. Peregro for the Sustainability Program will touch on some of this in his presentation. Business development, wanted to touch on this a little bit. There was some funding for quote-unquote recovery zone bonds. These are bonds that are meant to enhance getting projects built within recovery zones or zones that were hit hard by the economic downturn. Certainly, Las Vegas is one of those cities in the country that has been hit pretty hard. The way that the federal regulations were written for this program meant that they took a point-in-time snapshot of unemployment. And when they did that, basically over a year ago, it turned out that Washoe County and Reno had higher unemployment at the time than Las Vegas, Clark County, and Southern Nevada did. So as a result, we did not get a portion of those funding. We are working with the state, the governor's office, and potentially are going to be working with our congressional delegation to find out why. We think that was pretty short-sighted of the feds to just look at one point in time rather than what's happening as a trend. As we all know, economies are dynamic, and we are experiencing some challenges. So that potentially would have been a pool of funds that would have been for public bonds to support some new construction projects. I would mention, we are seeking Build America Bonds to layer on top of the certificates of participation for the city hall financing. This essentially would be meant to bring the overall cost of funds down for that project. As we mentioned at the last council meeting, we're going to be coming back to you with the exact financing structure and explain, as Councilman Wolfson had asked for in very simple terms, what the cost of the debt will be. But we really believe that the Build America Bonds will help lower the overall cost of the debt for City Hall, and we'll be presenting that in the weeks to come at City Council. Fire and Rescue is seeking grants for the FEMA for the new station at the Regional Public Safety Center, $5 million. And you see the total allocation that we're coming up against for fire. IT is seeking a lot of different funding. There's a lot of funding out there at the national level for broadband technology. You see $4 billion, so that's a pretty significant portion of the total money available at the national level. We're seeking funding for a public computer center capacity, expanding the current capacity. We're also looking with—working with IT to partner with Fire and Rescue and Detention and Enforcement on a new GIS program to help with those services. The deadlines have passed, and so we've—we're in the submission state, waiting to see whether or not funding will be awarded. Criminal justice, as you proved today on consent, we are getting a JAG grant for various things, multi-jurisdictional drug, gang, and task forces, crime prevention. And the funding that is coming through that program that we saw on the consent is roughly $7 million. You see the various programs there. This has been a good partnership, and I'd like to thank Detention Enforcement, Municipal Court, Leisure Services, Architectural Services, and Finance in supporting the effort for that grant. You see the competitive solicitation there, and then the funding totals for the various programs. The total award, as we mentioned on—and as you saw, I should say, on consent, $7.5 million was a competitive grant. So we're happy that we have been awarded that. As the mayor mentioned, we haven't physically received the funds, but we have gotten notice of the award. You see the awards to the various cities and counties. The funding impact on city programs, you see how the $7.5 million breaks down between the county, Henderson, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Mesquite, and the Metropolitan Police Department. And we've gotten a large share of the money that has already been awarded in the state, seven-and-a-half million of the 9.1 million. Next steps, we continue to meet on a monthly basis. We've developed a very good database for tracking projects, and we're now working to integrate this into the city's website so that the public can see what progress we're making. We continue to submit applications. The challenge, as the mayor alluded to, is we can't cross that finish line. The feds haven't set that finish line as far as a submission date and when we have to submit the grant applications, a submission deadline. We're really working as aggressively as we can with the various jurisdictions throughout Southern Nevada. And I'd like to thank Romeo Betty of my office for all his hard work in supporting our grant applications for the Recovery Act. That'd be glad to answer any questions.
Not—not so much a question. I certainly wasn't trying to be harsh with our efforts. But it's beyond me—if the stimulus plan means anything, it's beyond me that we're not getting any money. It—it just doesn't make any sense. Every portion of our economy is in dire need of it at this point in time, and Washington doesn't send it to us. I think it's a—something's wrong. Something's wrong with the system, and it's certainly not benefiting us. As I said, I'd bet more on a football game than what the—the city's received.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I think one thing that we've discussed and will be continuing to discuss with the manager's office is looking at whether or not we should work more aggressively with our congressional delegation on addressing some of these concerns.
Well, let's do it.
Recovery Zone Bonds is a good example of that, where we're really at the mercy of how they award the money and what regulations they write. And we can only be as good as getting—as how those regulations come out. If we don't get the input on the front end and it's heard, we're really at the mercy of—the regulations and where the money is directed to based on how they write the regulations.
Well, I know you're trying hard, but I think it's time for a full court press.
Your Honor?
Okay.
Mr. Arndt, if I may, Your Honor. Do we have any reports of municipalities or states that have actually started receiving funding for their prospective applications for? And they're getting the money, and they're putting people to work, and they're—they're making this program work? Because I'm hearing President Obama's comments a couple of weeks ago, he's just as impatient to get this money out in the streets as possible, just as we are. So do you have any reports on that?
I—I think we have heard some anecdotal reports of some communities getting some—some grant monies for different programs. I'd like to invite Romeo Betty up to the podium to answer that question. He's been tracking. He's been tracking more closely on a day-to-day, week-to-week basis what's happening at the federal level. Romeo?
Yes. We're seeing a lot of activity, but not a lot of, I guess, really good information. The onsite, the recovery.gov is really the federal government's mechanism to communicate all the information to us. We're not seeing that information really coming to fruition just yet. By October, we'll still getting a first look at a major report from the feds and all the other states and communities as well. So, that'll be a telltale time for us to look at what's going on nationally. Right now, there are a lot of conversations. We've seen other cities talking about they have our funds in place already. How that happened, we're not aware, how that happened at this point.
Well, I would suggest, pursuant to Councilman Ross's question, that if other cities have gotten it, that we better call up their mayors and find out how they got it. Let me know, because we need it.
We'll talk to the council conference of mayors as well and find out what they have to offer.
We need it. Time is of the essence here. It doesn't get better every day.
We agree.
And, Your Honor, I ask that question because is this just getting bogged down in the federal bureaucracy, and we, the people of this community, are not receiving, you know, these funds to reinvigorate the economy? I mean, that's kind of my question. And if there are cities or municipalities and local governments that have received this, how have they done it so quickly and we have not? I mean, look at the mess that California's in. So, that's a valid question.
It is.
We'll look into that.
All right. You have your marching orders.
Absolutely.
All right. This is Mayor Pro Tem's motion.
Your Honor, all I can say is I don't watch the federal news that often, but I've heard that they, Phase One has been so successful with the stimulus money, we're going into Phase Two.
I see.
So, I would move to accept this report, and just ask staff to work prudently and try to get us some of this money.
All right, let's vote, please.
Yeah.
Post.
Fastly.
Motion carries. All right. Item fifty-five, discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new locksmith license for Green Valley Lock &amp; Safe, Inc., doing business as Green Valley Lock &amp; Safe, at eighty North Pecos Road in Suite T. This is in the county.
Mayor, members of council, Carol Meyer, Finance and Business Services. The applicant that we have before you today for temporary consideration for this locksmith license has met all of our requirements for this license, and my recommendation would be approval subject to all conditions.
Sir, would you be kind enough to identify yourself, please?
Jeff Schoen, site two-eight-eight Heatherstone, owner-operator of Green Valley Lock &amp; Safe.
All right. Are there any questions of Ms. Meyer or the gentleman?
Just more or less a comment and a question. It seems like all we have here is these locksmiths for locksmiths. We've had a number of ten or twelve or fourteen of them here in the last couple of months. Why all of a sudden we have these locksmiths?
That's a good question. I'm sure that he can probably answer that better than I can, but I just want to let you know that he is currently licensed in the city of Henderson. He has been licensed in Green Valley Lock. He's just getting a license so he can work in our jurisdiction. But I'm sure we're seeing more of these based upon the requirements for the foreclosures. We've, I know that some of the applicants have told us that there's a lot more need for locksmiths today.
For the call, I make my motion to pass this item.
All right, let's go to that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go back to item number fifty. I've been advised by the city attorney that we're in a position where I can recall that at this time, and...
You abstain.
I abstain from that one, and then Mayor Pro Tem will take it over.
Item fifty is a public hearing, possibly to consent and to approve the issuance of private activity bonds by Industrial Development Authority of the County of Pima West Metro Police Facility, lease revenue bond, Series two thousand nine, and subordinate Series two thousand nine B, to finance the proposed Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Headquarters, to be located at the northwest corner of Martin Luther King Boulevard and Alpha Drive. We had a disclosure from Councilman Anthony, and we also had one from Councilman Ross, who's going to be abstaining. Councilman Anthony is going to be voting on this item. And Candice is here, so Candice, we'd be glad to hear from you.
Hi, Candice Falder with the Department of Finance and Business Services. As you said, this item is for the design, construction, and equipping of the new headquarters for the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. The Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of nineteen eighty-two requires that the issuer, here that would be Pima County, conduct a public hearing in the jurisdiction where the project resides and obtain the local government's approval before issuing the bonds. These bonds will not constitute indebtedness or liability of the city of Las Vegas or a charge against our general credit or taxing powers, but shall be payable solely from the sources provided for in the proceedings pursuant to which the bonds are issued. If you have any questions, we have some representatives here.
Are there any questions, Ms. Falder?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, but I wanted to make a little bit of a record as to why this was held earlier this morning and why we're hearing it right now.
It was on coffee break, we understand that.
Thank you. The, first of all, let me start with the item itself. The way the item is agendized, it says public hearing and impossible action, and if you read the backup documentation, the recommendation is for a council to consent to and approve the issuance at the Metro Police Facility lease revenue bonds. There is no action necessary by council today. I've spoken with council for the applicant, and it turns out that all you need to do is hold a public hearing and then let the people in Pima County know that you held a public hearing, so that's what we're here for. Second, because it is a public hearing, I am concerned that there conceivably are people that showed up this morning that are now coming back at one o'clock. While I think it's unlikely, it is possible. So, my recommendation is to hold the public hearing now, open it up to the public, let council for the applicant make the record. At the end of it, recess this item to one o'clock and recall it at one o'clock. The applicant will no longer be here because they have other appointments. If there's anybody here to speak in opposition or wants to make any kind of a record, they'll have an opportunity to, at the end of which we close the public hearing, and you'll be able to sign the certificate necessary to move this project forward. With that on the record, I urge that you open the public hearing at this time.
Thank you. Public hearing's open.
Juanita Clark, on behalf of Charleston Neighborhood Preservation, what state is Pima County in?
I'd say Arizona.
Thank you.
It was just a good guess. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yes, good morning, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the council. I'm Chris Kemper. With me is Pat Ray. We're here on behalf of the parties to whom Mr. Gerbik referred. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Gerbik for working with us so that we can hold it in this kind of bifurcated hearing process. Mr. Ray has some comments that he would like to make for the record. I think the most important thing, as staff's already indicated, is that there's no fiscal impact on the city. The city has no obligation whatsoever under this. TEFRA, as it's called, requires that you have this hearing, so if anyone does have any comments or concerns, they can raise them in a public forum. That is all that is being asked of you, is to create the public forum, which you have done, and we very much appreciate that. And then at one, I will be here, the lesser of the two representatives, but I'll still nevertheless be here in the event some questions come up. But I don't, I know Mr. Ray has just a few brief comments. Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
Just very quickly, Pat Ray with the law firm of Q-Tech Rock in Scottsdale, Arizona. Thank you so much for letting us get back on the agenda here. We are bond counsel to the Industrial Development Authority of Pima County, Arizona. The Pima County IDA is issuing revenue bonds for a five-oh-one C-three in Tucson, Arizona, to finance this facility here in Las Vegas. As was mentioned, under the tax law, we have to have a public hearing both in Tucson and in Las Vegas in order to jump through the federal tax hoops. So, what's being requested today is just to hold a public hearing and then certify that a public hearing was held, and that's pretty much all we need to have accomplished today. I sure appreciate your putting us on the agenda.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Any questions or comments from the council members? Hearing, and then we'll trail this item until one o'clock this afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
All right, thank you. Item fifty-six, this item will be trailed to the afternoon session to be heard in conjunction with item one-eleven. Item fifty-seven is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license, MWT, Inc., doing business as Accelerated Chiropractic, at five-nine-hundred West Charleston Boulevard in Suite One. This is an ancillary license to an existing chiropractic business, Accelerated Chiropractic. Ms. Meyer?
Mayor, members of council, again, just a little history on how we arrived at the ancillary massage establishments we're seeing with chiropractic businesses today. There was a change in the state level at the end of December that required that chiropractic assistants are no longer allowed to perform massage. Having said that, the State Board of Massage Therapy has required that anyone conducting massage in any establishment be licensed with the State Board of Massage Therapy. So, we've had quite a few chiropractic establishments. We've gone into, assisted in the education of this change of the state law, and that's why we're seeing so many of them come forward today. The applicant that we have before us today has met all of our requirements for consideration of temporary approval of this ancillary massage establishment license. Some of the conditions on this type of license are that the room is no more than a hundred and fifty square feet, that they have no exterior signage advertising massage, and that their hours of massage have to mirror their operation of their, hours of their business. These conditions have been explained to the applicant, and she's here to answer any questions you may have.
Yes, ma'am.
My name's Dr. Marcia Tinberg. I'm owner-operator of Accelerated Chiropractic. I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the ladies? All right, seeing none, this is Councilwoman Tarkanian's word, Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, I have your brief on this item, Your Honor, and I make motion to pass this as an approval of all conditions.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, we'll go to item sixty-one. This is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of a tavern license for Dominic L. Leno, doing business as Club Twenty-One Hundred, located at twenty-one-hundred Fremont Street, and this is in Ward Three. Anybody here on behalf of the city? Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, today is a six-month review of a permanent license for Club Twenty-One Hundred, and at the end of the discussion today, I'll have a recommendation for council to consider. You'll see in your backup, an investigative report prepared by Metro, and there are some concerns that are outlined in that report. Today, the, on the review, I would like to just put on the record that there was a condition on the license for permanent status back in January of this year that Mr. Leno had entertainment approved only on Sunday nights, ending Monday morning, I believe, at two a.m. In your backup, you'll find that one of, that condition has been violated. We believe that Mr. Leno has had more entertainment on other nights, Friday, Saturday, than Thursday nights, and by doing so, that is a violation of the condition. Additionally, recently, there was a chronic nuisance notice that was issued to Mr. Leno by the Metropolitan Police Department Downtown Area Command, and that also is another concern that we have presently on the operations of the business. We feel that Mr. Leno has not complied with the council's direction on the operation of this business, and today I'm going to be recommending to the City Council that, per this review, that council provide me with direction to prepare a complaint for disciplinary action, and we will attempt to bring that complaint back to the City Council for a full hearing upon approval of that complaint, but the complaint would be considered by the City Council on either the August fifth agenda or on the August nineteenth agenda.
All right, thank you. Bear with me one moment, please.
Mayor, good man, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Jim, you're looking at recommending bringing this item back during the first or second meeting of August, and what are the options at that meeting that you'll be bringing, bringing forward?
If the council approves a complaint for disciplinary action, the council can recommend either a revocation of the license, a suspension of the license, imposition of fines, or other actions they deem appropriate.
To be quite frank with you, I think to go forward today, based on the report that we have, and I'm sure Mr. Leno and his council have received a copy of the report.
We have, Your Honor.
Very good. I think it would be wasting your time, to be quite frank with you, because I think at the end of the day, based on what we see, we're going to have to ask that in order to show cause, be filed. If you want to go forward today and have a hearing, I'll do that, but I think you may as well save your best shot for, after we get this order to show cause.
I think that'd be preferred, Your Honor.
I think it's...
I could make a, if I could make one point...
Sure.
Before you mention, I would like to say something. You know, we hear all kinds of licenses, and I think every council member and the mayor that sit up here really tried to help those going into business to be successful. And we trust and we believe. Many, many times, one of us or all of us has sat at one time or another. Good luck. We gave this young man exactly what he wanted. And the stuff that I've seen, the stuff that I've heard about, is ridiculous. And to me, he's just slapping us in the face and saying, "I don't need you for anything." The license don't mean anything. It's a privileged license, and it doesn't mean anything to him. Thank you, Your Honor.
You were, you asked to be heard.
Yes.
Please identify yourself.
Yes, of course. Dean Kajioke, eight-ten South Casino Center Boulevard, here with Mr. Leno and on behalf of Mr. Leno. Mr. DiFiore referenced a nuisance notice. We have filed an appeal to that notice that is pending. In fact, I believe there is a hearing date scheduled for that. I don't have it offhand, but we do have a hearing date on that. Just want to make you aware of that.
I appreciate that. Do you have a motion at this time?
Yes, Your Honor. I would move that we bring this item forward on August the fifth for a show cause hearing.
Actually, if I could, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, to refine that a little bit, in order to have a hearing on the alleged violations, this council needs to approve a complaint, and then after that complaint is approved and served and a hearing date is set, then the hearing occurs under the statute within, no, sooner than thirty days after the council approves it, nor later than sixty days. What I'd recommend, if you would accept a modification to your motion, is to direct staff to prepare a complaint for discipline and bring it back to this council at the soonest available date.
That'd be fine. That'd be my correction motion.
All right, that's the motion, then. Let's go on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I skipped fifty-eight, so I'll call fifty-eight now. Fifty-eight is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license, the Neck and Back Clinics, LLP, doing business as Northwest Neck and Back Clinic, at thirty-four-thirty North Buffalo Drive in Suite one-ten. This is an ancillary license to an existing chiropractic business, and this is in Ward Four. Ms. Meyer?
Mayor, members of council, again, the applicants that you have before you today have met our requirements for consideration of temporary approval of this ancillary massage establishment license. I'll go ahead and read the conditions on the record, that the massage room is no larger than a hundred and fifty square feet, that they have no exterior signage that advertise massage, and that their hours of operation for massage mirror their hours of operation for their business. I've met with both of the doctors, explained these conditions, and they're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. Gentlemen, will you identify yourself, please?
Yeah.
Dr. Mike Barney, I'm a chiropractor.
Good morning, Mayor, Dr. Benjamin Lurie.
Want the record to reflect that Dr. Lurie's dad is a prior mayor of the city of Las Vegas, a good friend of mine, a good guy, and a great mayor, and it's a privilege having you with us today. I don't think I could be fair here. I think I would have to support this no matter what because of my relationship with his father, so, Mr. Gerbik, I'm going to abstain.
Put some on, Brian.
Well, I guess we're all in the same bind. I don't think I'm different from anybody else. Everybody would abstain because we have such affection for your father, so I take back my abstention.
I don't hate at all, though.
Okay, I'm ready to move. Any questions? I may have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to approve.
All right, thanks. Let's go, please. Motion carries, say hi to your family.
I will. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council.
Okay, item sixty-two is discussion and possible action regarding... Okay, item 62 is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of an appeal of a work card denial for Laura Jones at Smith's Food and Drug Center, 370 at 3160 North Rainbow Boulevard. This is in Ward 5. DiFiore.
Mayor, members of the council, today, Ms. Jones is here today to have a review of her temporary work card for the Smith's Food King that she was approved for on temporary status six months ago. We've received a report from the Metropolitan Police Department that there have been no more, no further incidents with Ms. Jones, and she does have support of her employer. I have a letter here that indicates that, and we would recommend a permanent work card site-specific for this location.
Very good. Ms. Jones?
Thank you very much, Councilman, and I'd like to ask while I'm here, at any point in time, sometimes we have, you know, because of the economy, our hours have been cut short at one time or another, if, when it would be possible to have a work card if I wanted to take another part-time job. Not that I have any plans leaving Smith's at all. It is a union job, I'm glad I have that job and I'm thankful for it. Just in the event, if I could take on a part-time job outside of that one, if it's only site-specific to Smith's, that wouldn't allow me to do that.
I believe the process is that she would file a change of address for her employer status with the Metropolitan Police Department, and if that's the case, I'm sure that we can accommodate her at another establishment.
Okay. How's life treating you?
Good, good. Life's good right now.
All right, that's like, we'd like to hear that. That's very good. Councilman Barber.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I would like to move to follow staff's recommendation for approval of this item, and good luck to you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you.
Let's go, please. Motion carries, and good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 63 is discussion and possible action regarding a six-month review of an appeal of a work card denial for Kevin Landino at March Bacchus at 2620 Regatta Drive in Suite 106 in Ward 4. DiFiore.
Mayor, members of the council, again, this is a six-month review of a temporary work card that was approved for Mr. Landino at Marche Bacchus, 2620 Regatta Drive. In the last six months, there have been no incidents that Metro has recorded on Mr. Landino, and I believe Mr. Wyatt, the owner of Marche Bacchus, continues to support his employment, and we would recommend approval of the permanent work card site-specific to this location.
Very good. Mr. Landino.
Yes, sir. How are you today?
We're fine.
Good, thank you. You know, I'm just very thankful that you guys have given me the opportunity to continue to work and have allowed me to get my work card, and as you said, the owners are very kind as well to give me the opportunity to have a job there, and I'm very appreciative of it.
Very good. Thank you. All right, Councilman Anthony.
Mr. Mayor, motion to approve.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries, good luck to you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Item 64 is discussion and possible action on the city of Las Vegas Neighborhood Stabilization Plan 2, NSP 2, competitive application for $102,648,000 of NSP 2 funds through the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, ARA, stimulus funds specifically targeted for the city of Las Vegas on foreclosure, acquisition, and/or redevelopment projects, and an update on the initial neighborhood stabilization plan, NSP, previously approved as part of the Housing and Economic Recovery Act, H E R A, that being the acronym for that, this pertains to all wards.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Steve Harson, Director of Neighborhood Services. I also have with me today Tim Wirtwright, who is the Neighborhood Development Manager, and we're going to walk you through both NSP 1 and NSP 2. Real quickly, I just want to give you an update on NSP 1, as far as, I know there's been a lot of talk about where these programs are. NSP 1 was part of the Housing Economic Recovery Act from 2008. City Council actually approved the plan that the staff had presented to you in December 1st, which was submitted to HUD, and the city actually did receive approval that we were granted or approved, the $20.6 million. Yes.
Mayor Goodman, could you go back to that previous slide? Okay. The last bullet point says the city received a total of $20.6 million.
Yeah, and let me clarify, it's not sitting on our bank account, but it was approved that, yes, the money is there reserved for the city of Las Vegas.
And that's exactly why I wanted you to clarify that, because if you're at home reading that bullet point, it looks like we got $20 million, and we have not yet received that money.
You're correct. Quick breakdown of that.
We have gotten $4,833.
So far.
So the record should reflect that, please.
You will be the first one I contact when we get this money.
I can't wait, to be honest with you, because I'm fed up with them.
Okay. Real quickly, the $20.6 million, that was broken down, the city received a direct allocation by formula of $14.7 million. We worked with the state and partnered for another point five, five, for another $5.9 million. Real quickly, this sort of shows the target areas for that plan, again, the hard-hit zip codes being 89131, 89110, and 89108. The funding distribution for that plan was to break it down for a homebuyer assistance program, lease-to-own program, scattered-site housing, and then there was additional funds available for professional services as we needed it, and then also for administration costs, which could include salaries, training, and things associated specifically for this plan. The update is, again, as I stated, HUD or Washington DC did notify us that the $20.6 million, again, was approved and set aside, reserved for the city of Las Vegas. I will be honest, it's been a challenge working through the federal regulations. We have been diligently working on the implementation phases. While we had hoped that this could conceivably be done within three months, thus including formal agreements, building the programs, working on RFPs and securing services, we've had some other challenges face us during the same timeframe. Some of the competing priorities is through the new act, which is ARA, and Bill Arnn had given you an overview, these were opportunities for us to submit plans and compete for additional funds that could help our local community. This included the Housing Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Program, which we brought before you. That was due to the federal government on May 18th, and that was for $2.1 million. We did another application for the CDBG recovery portion, that was for $1.3 million. That was due to the federal government on June 5th, and what we're going to be presenting to you today is NSP 2, which is due to the federal government this Friday, July 17th, in which we are competing this time. This is a competition, unlike the NSP 1, for $102 million, our portion of the whole Southern Nevada allocation, which collectively were going for $367 million. What we're trying to do is, as I indicated, we've been dealing with a lot of the federal regulations, changing of interpretations, can meet competing priorities. Hopefully, once this NSP 2 application is submitted, we'll be redirecting our efforts and resources back on NSP 1. We may be being very aggressive of what I'm hoping we can accomplish, but to get the homebuyer program phase of NSP 1 on the streets by August, September, barring no surprises, barring no additional changes in rules and regulations, which I'm sure Tim can explain a little bit more, and then immediately following will be the scattered-site program and the lease-to-own program that we hope to get on the street by October. This is a good preview or segue into the NSP 2, and again, now, this is another allocation out of the ARA Act. This is a total portion of, or funding of $1.93 billion. The purpose is very much the same as NSP 1. Unfortunately, it does not help with foreclosure prevention. It is to help reduce and eliminate foreclosed properties to help stabilize neighborhoods. Again, it's got to be focused and targeted to specific census tracts, which primarily falls within Ward 6 and Ward 3. Part of this aspect is we did need to partner with our neighboring jurisdictions. That includes the cities of North Las Vegas, Henderson, and Clark County. We did create a consortium in which we did through a resolution and received your approval. Competitive, together, we're submitting a competitive application, and again, in totality, it's a little over $367 million for Southern Nevada, and the city of Las Vegas' portion of that would be $102,648,000. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Tim, let him to walk you through the target areas of the programs.
Very good, thank you. The target areas, which you mentioned earlier, they're targeted census tracts, which most of us, including myself, really aren't familiar with zip codes we are. So the actual targeted zip codes are 89131 and 89143, that's the northernmost portion of Ward 6, and then 89110, which is easternmost portion of Ward 3, just to give you an idea of where this, the funds can be spent for NSP 2. With respect to regulations, 50%, half of these funds that are awarded have to be spent within two years. The full amount must be spent within three years. The NSP 2 funds can serve households earning up to 120% of very median income. That basically is a family of four earning $78,500 a year, to give you an understanding of that. The NSP 2 program also requires that 25% of the awarded funds be used to serve households earning 50% of very median income. Example, that is a family of four earning $32,700 a year. Anyone participating in NSP 2 program must receive a minimum of eight hours of housing counseling from a HUD-approved housing counseling agency, of which there are about 10 of those right now in the Southern Nevada area. Again, it was mentioned that this is not a foreclosure prevention program. The, one of the regulations is that any properties purchased with NSP 2 funds must be done so at a discount equal to 1% below the appraised value of the property. Now, this is one, actually, originally when the regulations came out, it was 15%. The discount had to be 15% below appraised value. And, and actually, if I can, can I just go off track for just a moment, because you've asked the question about funding, you've asked the question about regulations and timing, let me just kind of explain, because this is one example where we started out with this 15% discount. Did a lot of work, by the way, working with agencies to try and lock that in, only to have it, you know, switched anyway later on down line, after putting all that staff time and effort into it. So essentially, as we go along, we're finding that the sand is shifting beneath our feet as we're working on this. So I don't want you to think that we're idle. We are working very hard at this, we really are. But to give you an overview of what's going on, you know, HARA, the Housing Economic Recovery Act, and then ARA, the American Recovery and Reinvestment Acts, essentially what those did, at least certainly with respect to the Department of Housing and Urban Development, is they've had to create brand-new programs. Okay, these are new programs. As I said, you can go on the website right now and see lists and lists of questions from cities and counties across the nation. And what's happening is HUD is trying to take all those questions, interpret them, make the best sense out of them that they can, and as a result, what we're finding is interpretations are changing. And so how we approach in the application process and how we approach the implementation process has effectively been slowed down for us, because we're having to, in some cases, go back and rework what we've already done based on a previous interpretation. So it makes it very difficult, and that's, kind of initially, that's what's happening right now, is everything is changing as we go, move along. As Mr. Arnn mentioned earlier, you know, we're certainly unaware of, having gone to some trainings and talking to local, as well as DC HUD offices, we're unaware of our situation really being unique, in terms of not receiving the monies at this point in time, in terms of this shifting sand beneath our feet, if you will, that we're experiencing, we're not unique. This is, this is across the nation. So if that helps give a little better understanding of where we're at and what's happening with respect to regulations, hopefully that somewhat answers the questions that have been asked earlier.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes, sir.
Before you move forward.
Sure.
You mentioned that we're not the only ones that have not received the funds?
Correct, correct. I mean, in other words, it's not unique to us. There may be, we can, you know, research it again to give you the most up-to-date, but just having gone to trainings, talking to our local offices, other cities and counties are facing the same situation, where they're going through these plans and trying to adapt against these new interpretations. They have not received funds either. They're also facing the same situation of setting up programs within these plans based upon the regulations, but then because a new interpretation comes out, it causes us, forces us to have to now change, you know, the rules that we put into the plan for each of those programs. And it's very frustrating, and it's been frustrating even for HUD staff that we talked to as well. I think they're all somewhat sort of the, you know, squirrel in the squirrel cage right now, trying to, trying to hurry up and make these happen, but again, they're, they're brand-new programs. That's always been a challenge with our grant-funded programs. We have other ones that have been in place for many years, 20, 30 years, binders and binders of interpretations and resolutions to those interpretations that we can refer to. Well, we don't have that benefit with these programs right now in order to HUD. They're, they're making these interpretations on the go, if you will.
On the fly. And that, so that leads me to my next question, and that is, when the, when the funds were initially applied for, there was an expiration date. What was that expiration date?
Sure. The, well, NSP 2.
The one from December.
Oh, from December, that's the NSP 1. The expiration date on that is actually June of 2013.
So in the, so being that the funds have not been allocated, are they adjusting the timeline as far as the deadline exists?
No.
Or, so that basically puts us in that much more of a crunch to get the money in and out the door even sooner than what was, than what we had an opportunity to do if we would have received the funds earlier? Is that accurate?
That is, that is correct and accurate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Your Honor, yes, thank you. A mention needs to be made about, you know, near since our press conference in Ward 6 was Senator Reed, the announcement of the Neighborhood Stabilization Plan, that Director Harson's and his team, and Ms. Rettwell, you need to know this too, we already do, but it needs to be mentioned how aggressively this department has gone after these funds. We were the first municipality to be approved from our, our plan, and that's significant in all of Southern Nevada. And since then, we are being just as aggressive to get these funds in our bank account, even though there may be only $4,800 there now. But I, you need to know that, Director, that I certainly, as a city councilman in Ward 6, certainly appreciate your efforts from all of your team and the city manager's office, because they are doing everything they can despite that federal bureaucratic backlog of challenges that you're continuing to, to experience. Even HUD's experiencing, and they're part, and I think they're part of that equation, so.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask Ms. Rettwell a question. Has AIG got their money?
I think that's a loaded question.
Are we less than AIG?
Well, I think, I think a lot of the TARP money has already been put out. They were holding some of it back, and I don't know how much of the amount that was being held back for reprogramming has been actually distributed. But I think the answer is yes, some of it, maybe not all of it.
I'm under the impression that a lot of these major companies got their bailout funds and have given bonuses to their employees. We, we've got $4,833 we could chop up. Okay, go ahead.
For the record, we've not received any bonuses.
Well, I think the record is screaming that.
The, as mentioned, we're competing to receive $102,648,000 under the NSP 2 application. We're looking to operate four programs essentially, again, in those targeted zip codes I mentioned earlier. The homebuyer assistance program, we're offering up to $50,000 of assistance for the mortgage buy-down, down payment, closing costs, and rehabilitation, maximum assistance per, per household, again, serving that family of four earning $78,500 a year. We're also looking at a second program, acquisition, rehab, and resale, essentially meaning that we would purchase foreclosed properties and then resell them to, again, qualified families such that their mortgage, monthly mortgage, does not exceed 30% of their household income. The third program, actually, the third program, acquisition, rehabilitation, and rental, is going to serve a couple of different income groups, and that's one group, those earning between 80% and 120% of very median income, and then the second group, those earning 50% of very median income. Again, to remind you that 25% of these funds do have to serve that 50% AMI group. The fourth program is redevelopment program, NSP 2. This particular application and funding source allows us to purchase properties that are vacant and have been foreclosed upon, or properties that were previously developed and have essentially have a blighted effect or influence on the community for the purpose of redeveloping and providing affordable housing, again, to qualified households. There is 10% of these funds are available for administration. That would pay for the salaries, supplies, training, costs to implement these programs. That's over a, a three-year period. We've actually chosen to use 5% of that for our admin and put the rest into the programs, as well as pay for any professional services that are needed to, again, make these programs successful. This point, the timeframes, again, we mentioned that this particular application for NSP 2 is due this Friday, July 17th. We've had a 10-day public comment period, received comments from the public on the plan. That was also posted on our website. I mean, minor stuff here, but we have to get 115 points out of a possible 150 to even be considered. We must get that 150 to even be considered for funding. And again, you know, as far as the consortium, we ourselves will have to get our agreements in and approved by HUD by December 1 of this year, again, assuming that we are in fact awarded funding. At this point, if you have any questions at all, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Any questions for the gentleman? All right, seeing none, they have a motion, please?
Yes, Your Honor. I would, again, compliment staff on the counseling Ross's comments. I think you have done a fantastic job. I just wish the money was flowing faster and, and a lot more of it, but I would move to accept the report, Your Honor, and just ask staff to continue to fight.
All right, let's go to that, please. Post. Post? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Item sixty-five is Report and Possible Action Regarding the Implementation of Sustainable Energy Strategy. This pertains to all awards. Mr. Perrigo?
Mayor and Council, Tom Perrigo, Planning and Development Department. This is an update on the implementation of the Sustainable Energy Strategy that you adopted back in September of two thousand and eight. As a result of that strategy, the city has been recognized as a leader in energy policy and climate change. Essentially, we're leveraging ARA money. We are an entitlement city, so we will be receiving, we haven't yet received, five-point-four million dollars in energy efficiency and conservation block, block grant money. We'll use that money to, leverage that money to, with bonds, some NV Energy solar rebates and some city money to complete about twenty-eight million dollars in energy projects. That initial investment will not only create enough energy savings to pay the debt payment, but will also return to the city about five-hundred thousand dollars in the first year. By continuing to reinvest the savings year after year, by the year two thousand and thirty, that savings will grow to about nine million dollars. As a result of that investment in energy projects, by two thousand and thirty, the city will reduce its energy demand by about thirty-five percent, and over twenty-five percent of the total city energy consumption will come from renewable resources. In addition, the city will reduce its carbon footprint by about forty percent. The way we're going to do this is by sort of tacking the energy from, in three areas. There are basically three primary consumers of energy at the city, city buildings, water pollution control facility, and streetlights. So we'll be installing solar-covered parking structures at approximately seventeen sites across the city. They'll be distributed around the city so that citizens can benefit from covered parking in a lot of city facilities. Here's an example of four sites where we'll be installing solar-covered parking. When we're all done, those seventeen sites will be covering over nine hundred spaces. At the water pollution control facility, we're currently in the process of selecting a contractor to put in a solar power plant. When we started this project, the price of solar was quite a bit more than it is today, so we're expecting to do up to four megawatts of solar energy. Combined with the use of methane gas out there, some other projects that are going on, roughly a third of the total energy consumed out there will be from renewable resources. We'll also be conducting facility retrofits. We're currently engaging an energy auditor to do some comprehensive energy audits on city facilities. As a result of that audit, then, we'll be doing some upgrades to city facilities to reduce energy. And then exterior lighting upgrades as well. As I said, streetlights consume about a third of the city's total energy. We're looking at, with this first round, replacing about eighteen thousand streetlights, that's about a third of the city's streetlights, with a payback period of less than seven years. The Sustainable Energy Strategy also calls for community programs. We've partnered with Home Free Nevada and NV Energy to provide rebates to homeowners to perform comprehensive home energy audits in conjunction with doing an AC tune-up with NV Energy. This will educate the homeowner on the performance of their home and give them a lot of information that they can use to make additional improvements, but by doing the AC tune-up with NV Energy, we can expect ten to twenty percent energy savings right away, and that is at a very low cost or free to the homeowner. Additionally, we're working with Green Chips to create a revolving loan fund to provide low-interest loans to homeowners to perform energy retrofits and renewable energy projects. The green building program was approved in two thousand and six. This implementation strategy calls for providing incentives to home builders that build to a green standard. Either through the Southern Nevada Home Builders Green Building Partnership requirements, or if you build to a LEED standard or a Green Globe standard, or to NV Energy's Energy Plus standard, you'll be eligible for, eligible for up to one thousand dollars in rebates for, for every home you build. Now, the NV Energy's Energy Plus program has been very successful. They've built over four hundred homes to that standard last year, and that, the requirement is that you test out at thirty percent more energy efficient than what current code requires. So what we're trying to do is, is provide incentives to have those homes built in the city of Las Vegas. Also, under education outreach, we've partnered with the NLB to, to primarily create a website that's going to promote all of the energy projects that we're doing, so people will have access to not only the solar projects, but some of the retrofit projects, and be able to get real-time data that shows the kinds of savings or the energy generation as a result of the renewable projects. What this means for the city overall, this is all new money coming into the city, so in a sense, it's expanding the, the overall economy. This is going to create a tremendous amount of jobs, and when you think about the workforce that we, that we'll be creating jobs for, primarily in the trades, and as, as those, as those jobs have diminished because of the decline in construction, it's not just the trades jobs, but it's also all the jobs downstream, the, the shipping and the warehousing and the manufacturing, the distribution, the accounting, and all the ancillary services that go along with that construction. So as we create these jobs, we'll start to put together a lot, put people back to work in a lot of areas in the economy. Not only that, but that will create a lot of sales tax revenue for, for government. And when you think about the incentives we're providing for the green-built homes, the cost of those incentives will be returned to the city in, in terms of property tax revenue. So it starts to pay back the city in more ways than just energy savings. In addition, the people participating in these programs over the next fifteen, twenty years will realize about thirteen million dollars a year in savings, and that's money as well that will be spent back into the economy. So with that, that sort of lays out the implementation of the energy strategy. From the research I've done, this implementation of this strategy will, not only are we going to be a leading city in terms of the policy, but we're also going to be a leading city in terms of our, of our energy strategy and the implementation of that, and probably one of the, the top cities for renewable energy in the country. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perrigo.
Mayor Goodman?
All right, Councilor Barlow?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Perrigo. Mr. Perrigo, what is the overall reduction in the carbon footprint, and what does that represent for the Las Vegas Valley residents?
Well, my calculations, by two thousand and thirty, we will have reduced our carbon footprint by about forty percent. Now, that's the, just the city as an enterprise, our organization as an enterprise, forty percent. I have not calculated it community-wide as a result of, of people participating in the community programs, but that puts us on target. If you look at the research and what a lot of the scientists are saying, we need to achieve that level of reduction in order to reverse the effects of climate change. So that puts the city right on, on track with sort of the targets that people are setting. They're saying about thirty percent by two thousand and thirty, and we're going to exceed that.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
Right, Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. Likewise, with the Neighborhood Stabilization Plan that Director Harson was up here talking about, as aggressively as they're moving forward with that in the federal government, I need to commend Mr. Perrigo. I just look at him as one of the foregoing experts on these issues for our community, both the city and, and the local, other local municipalities, because he is very involved with all this, and the council needs to recognize that. We've got a wonderful staff member who has those abilities to bring everybody to the table. Likewise, however, I'm kind of selfish about the city of Las Vegas, and Mr. Perrigo, you and I have talked about this, he's gone over this report with me in great detail at my request, because I want the city to be on the forefront, the cutting edge, of all of these renewable energy programs. I don't want any other cities, Los Angeles, Henderson, San Francisco, even coming close to us in regards to saving energy and doing what's right for our environment. You missed one word. Can you go back to that last slide? Well, it's, it's still up, I'm sorry. Diversification of our economy, because that's kind of what you're doing too in bringing these things to this community. We're diversifying our economy, not having to rely so heavily on just one industry or another. Yes, this does create construction jobs, but it does create an entire new industry in saving energy, saving money, and saving jobs at the same time. And I commend you for the great work you're doing. Keep it up. Be just as aggressive as Director Harson's is with chasing money from the feds. You gotta, you gotta do this for the city of Las Vegas.
Thank you, Councilman. If I may put an emphasis on that last point, I met with the Nevada Development Authority yesterday, and they're telling me about the largest solar companies in the world that are looking to locate operations in the United States, and one of the primary considerations is a commitment by that municipality towards renewable energy and solar energy. So in addition to diversifying the economy, it, it really is going to give us a leg up when it comes to attracting companies that are in the renewable energy business, which of course is going to be the primary growing industry over the next few years. I'd also like to add, Mayor, that the Las Vegas Springs Preserve has been a tremendous partner with us on this, on the Home Free Program, and NV Energy has been really amazing helping us bring together these resources and partnering on these programs that, quite frankly, under the restrictions of the ARA money, we couldn't do if it wasn't for partnerships with NV Energy. And they're both here, and I don't know if they wanted to say something or be recognized.
If representatives from those institutions would like to address us, we'd be happy to hear from you. NV Energy coming from one end?
Mayor and Council, Edgar Patino with NV Energy. Good morning.
Good morning.
I, I too wanted to commend you on your ongoing efforts and unwavering commitment to sustainability. Your vision and leadership will truly ensure that our great city stays wonderful for many generations to come. The concepts that you've chosen to support, including energy efficiency and conservation, are really efforts that dovetail nicely with what we're doing in the community too, and I commend you and also Mr. Tom Perrigo for reaching out to us and others in the community to work with you on these efforts that are so important. And if I may, I also wanted to take a quick moment to recognize a couple of our staff members that are here who have worked with Mr. Tom Perrigo. I've got Mr. Leo Long here, Ms. Quinn Parker, and Ms. Kelly Vagianos.
Welcome, both.
But again, congratulations on this important work. Thank you very much for partnering with us, and good luck.
Well, thank you for working so closely with Mr. Perrigo. People are referring to him as the Jolly Green Giant these days, so it's a good thing for the city of Las Vegas. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Jay Nichols, Mayor and Councilman. Thank you for allowing us to say a few words. I'm very pleased, and the Springs is very excited to work with the city and Mr. Perrigo on these projects. We've been partnering now for about a year in developing programs that will help execute some of the things that Tom has just presented to you, and I just wanted to say thank you very much that this is a great thing for our city.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your cooperation. Is that it, Mr. Perrigo?
Well, that's it. I guess my recommendation would be to accept the report, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Before we do, though.
Yes.
You know, we had this event last, when did you believe it was? Over there at Community Center in Stupac area. You know, Mr. Perrigo was supposed to be there, but he wasn't. If you'd explain to us, Mr. Perrigo, what we did over there at the New Community Center over at Stupac?
Those are the solar car park.
Right, that's part of the overall solar car, car port, solar-covered parking program.
And what, what are we going to do over there with that power? We're going to be saving? We're going to be, we're going to be creating? Where's the power going to go?
The power, well, do you want the technical answer? These products are all net meters, so the pa, the power essentially goes back onto the grid, but, but it, it runs our meter, it, it reduces the amount of energy we use at those facilities and, and reduce the cost for us to operate those facilities.
And this is, we got a new community center that's going to be opening up later this year over there at the Stupac Center. It's a great, great facility, and we're going to have, I think, thirty-five covered parking spaces. We're going to have solar panels on, on top of the, the parking structures, and I think it's just fantastic we're doing stuff like this. So thanks, Tom.
Can I have one more comment?
Certainly.
And I've talked to Tom Perrigo about this and, and Betsy Rettwell, as well as trying to find an economical avenue for residential homeowners to participate in some of these systems and some of these programs, and trying, trying to create a program that would allow a residential homeowner or maybe a small business to somehow be able to afford affordable tech system, somehow be able to participate in our sustainability initiatives. And I, since Nevada Power's here, Edgar, you know, I'd like that to continue. We will have an ordinance coming up, I think the first reading of it is today, and on, on wind generators in residential neighborhoods. And we have to do everything we can to pursue these avenues as for a sustainable city. So I want to challenge Edgar and NV Energy to, to participate in that with the city of Las Vegas. And you know, I've already talked about this, Mr. Perrigo, and we're trying to scratch our heads and figure out a way to do that, so I just appreciate the efforts of your department and your staff. And I'm going to pre-thank you, Mr. Patino, for NV Energy's participation as well.
Thank you.
I move to accept the report.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixty-six through sixty-nine are all related items for the city's wastewater treatment facilities at six-zero-zero-five East Vegas Valley Drive and thirty-two-seventy-one North Durango Drive near Ward Three and in Ward Four. They will be heard together before separate motions are taken. Number sixty-six is Report and Possible Action Regarding an Interlocal Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas and the Southern Nevada Water Authority to Supply Energy Needs. Sixty-seven is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Network Integration Transmission Service Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas, the Colorado River Commission, and Nevada Power Company Doing Business as NV Energy to Supply Energy Transmission Service. Sixty-eight is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Network and Integration Transmission Service Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas, the Colorado River Commission, and Nevada Power Company Doing Business as NV Energy to Supply Energy Transmission Service. And number sixty-nine is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Distribution Only Service Agreement Between the City of Las Vegas, the Colorado River Commission, and Nevada Power Company Doing Business as NV Energy to Supply Energy Transmission Services. The staff recommends approval for each of these items. Mr. Cervantes?
Good morning, Mayor and Council, Horkus Adranta's Department of Postal Works. Mayor, before we start with the presentation, I just need to make a correction for the record on item sixty-six. The fiscal impact item shown on the agenda is eighteen thousand. The correct amount is twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five.
All right, the record will show me if I, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, this item is to consider procuring power from the Colorado River Commission for operation out at our water pollution control facility. The Colorado River Commission is the state agency that's responsible for managing both the water and hydropower resources from the Colorado River for Nevada. Part of their authority is for the purchase, sale, and distribution of power, and so these items are to consider the city becoming a customer of the Colorado River Commission for our pumping operations at, at the treatment plant. With us today, we have Gail Bates, who is the Energy Service Manager for the Colorado River Commission, that's going to provide a, a presentation on the specifics of the program.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning. There you go.
Before I get started, for the record, I need to mention that the presentation I have today is slightly updated from the version that was posted, so you have the latest presentation before you.
Thank you. See you then.
Since nineteen ninety-nine, the CRC and the Southern Nevada Water Authority have been working collaboratively to secure energy supplies for the Southern Nevada Water Authority's major pumping loads. The statute that allows us to provide this service is NRS seven-zero-four-seven-eighty-seven. The statute was enacted during the two thousand and one legislative session, and it allows the CRC to sell electricity and provide transmission service or distribution service or both to meet the needs of the SNWA and its member agencies for their wastewater and water pumping needs. So it's important to recognize that we don't have unlimited authority to supply all loads. Our statutory ability stops at serving water pumping and wastewater treatment needs. Today, approximately ninety-five percent of the SNWA's energy needs and fifty percent of the Las Vegas Valley Water District's needs are met through this program. The program is jointly managed by the CRC and the SNWA, and it's been very much a collaborative effort between state and local government. To give you an overview of the program, energy makes up approximately eighty percent of the cost of electricity. The remaining twenty percent is delivery of that commodity and administrative and general costs. So the cornerstone of our program is in how we procure energy. If the city were to participate in this program, we would purchase energy on the, on the energy markets for a five-year rolling period. So if the city were elect to join the program, we would immediately go in and contract for five years' worth of electricity based on a forecast of your needs. And as the, the near-term year rolls off, we would then secure for the later, later year to ensure that you always had five years' worth of energy. The way we've set the contracts up contractually, the CRC would provide the energy to the SNWA, who would in turn provide it to the participating member agencies. And we've set things up this way to mirror the relationship that's already in place today between the SNWA and the member agencies on the water side. So we've more or less extended those contractual arrangements to the energy procurement program. We also have a risk control committee that is comprised of the SNWA, the CRC, and the member agencies, so our intent is to make this program as collaborative as possible for the SNWA and the member agencies elect to participate. The other, the last point on energy is that energy from your own customer, own generation, is used to meet your needs. So if you were to participate, if you were to construct your own solar generation facilities, for example, that energy is used to meet your needs, it simply displaces what we would otherwise be procuring on the marketplace. So we've tried to make the program energy So we've tried to make the program energy-friendly toward renewable energy facilities. It's also an important point to recognize that the financial benefits or detriments of the asset that you would build stays with you. It doesn't get commingled with any of the other participating member agencies. Once we buy the energy, how is it delivered? It's delivered over NV Energy's wires. NV Energy has federally approved tariffs in place for customers to use their transmission network. They have tariffs approved by the Public Utilities Commission in place for customers to use their distribution network to deliver energy. And so we would sign up under those agreements. Those are, most of the agreements you have before you are for delivery of the energy. And we would pay them the rates and charges that are in those tariffs. It's important to note that NV Energy continues to construct facilities for you in the same manner that they always have. They will continue to respond to system outages in the same manner that they always have, so that the nature of that part of their business does not change. And finally, we'll be putting in advanced metering systems, which will allow you to monitor your usage in real time, if you would want to, to be able to respond to how your pumping plant operates. Okay, what are the benefits of the program? Well, the main benefit is cost stability. Because power is procured on a rolling five-year basis, your power costs are largely fixed. So it makes it easier for you to budget. You don't have to encumber funds year after year, not knowing what will happen to your energy prices. And that's one of the main benefits. We're also purchasing power specifically to meet water pumping and wastewater treatment needs, so we aren't purchasing to serve any other types of customer loads. Customers, again, get to participate in some of the decision-making through the Risk Control Committee. The city would sit on that Risk Control Committee and participate. And also, excess generation from customer-owned generation assets would be sold at market prices, and that would allow you to offset the proceeds against your energy costs. So if, for example, you have facilities that are generating and you do not need the energy during certain periods of the day, we would market that energy for you, and the proceeds would go to offset your costs. Once again, we've tried to make it as energy, renewable energy-friendly as possible.
Mayor, good morning.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilman.
Yes, the key point you just touched on in regards to the excess power, explain that in a little bit more detail in regards to if, in fact, an entity does not utilize all of its energy source, how, in fact, that will be used to offset the expense. Help me understand it a little bit more.
Sure. During certain times of the day, you may have a renewable energy generator that's running that you may not need to meet all of your needs. There may be other customers that we are serving that need that energy during a particular day. So what we would do is sell that energy, in effect, to them, and we would credit you the market price, as if we had gone out and sold it into the marketplace directly.
And how is that process done? What procedure do you use to determine how much one uses and how much you'll be able to sell to another entity?
We would, we look, we look after the fact, and we see what was, what was available for use during that particular time. We first would look at your forecast, so everything is done on a forecast basis. So if we forecast that you're going to not need that energy, we would go ahead and sell it at that point in time on a forward-looking basis.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, there are some upfront costs associated with this program. Right now, we are looking at energy exit fees from NV Energy up to $2.4 million. Whenever a customer selects an alternative energy provider, there are exit fees, and they're designed to make NV Energy whole. The exit fees are, come in two parts. There's a deferred energy exit fee, which reimburses NV Energy for any fuel and purchased power they've procured to serve you. And there's an impact fee that protects them and their remaining customers from economic harm due to a customer's decision to switch energy providers. And that more or less comes in two parts. Part one is a, it's a lost revenue calculation, where they will look at revenue that they receive from the city today, compare it to transmission and distribution revenue or transportation revenue they'll receive tomorrow. They will then offset that with fuel and purchased power cost savings, and that is calculated over a three-year period. Again, all designed to make NV Energy whole. There's some, also some additional metering and telecommunications infrastructure. I mentioned the advanced meters that would be installed as a result of the city participating. Those costs are about $125,000. Historical and projected savings. Over the last two years, the SNWA has saved approximately 55, 35.6, excuse me, $35.6 million in energy costs. If that, if that number sounds large, it is. It represents approximately 30% of the, 30% savings for the SNWA annually. I say that with a, with a huge caveat. SNWA has a mix of assets in their portfolio. They've participated in a natural gas plant. They also have a small portion of federal hydropower from the Colorado River dams. So I say, I put that number up there as, it's a measure of our success, but it may not be representative of the same savings the city might see in the future. The savings estimates are also dependent upon what you believe is going to happen to NV Energy's rates in the future, which are difficult to project. That being said, we've tried to put together the best estimate we could of what we think the city's savings will be under this program, and we believe it's in the neighborhood of 8% to 12%. That, that's about a four, that's about a four-and-a-half to five-year payback on the, on the $2.4 million and change in exit fees at the 12%. At the 8% savings level, it's closer to an eight-year payback. And with that, I'll take any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions?
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman.
No, I just wanted her to emphasize that. She's done that in regards to the exit fees that we're having to pay upfront in order to save money in the long run, and I want the residents of this city to understand that, and so we're not wasting that money. This is money we're looking down the road, and these are questions I asked you in our, in our briefing, that in the long run, we're going to save this city a significant amount of money. However, this, these exit fees and the metering and telecommunications part of it's pretty minor compared to what we're paying in exit fees. But this is in our efforts, again, to save energy, you know, increase our bottom line, and do the right thing for the residents of this city. And I think you made that, that point. I just wanted to bring that out.
All right, thank you, Councilman.
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to dovetail on what Councilman Ross shared as well. I do have a question in respect to the 8% to 12%. What is this based on? How are you getting this 8% to 12%? Elaborate on that.
It's, the major component, when, when we look at what our costs will be, our costs for the city that we'd be incurring, is power prices that we're seeing in the, in the forward markets today. So it's based on a snapshot in time of forward energy prices, and we generally know what it costs to layer on top transmission and administrative and general costs. We take that total cost and we compare it to a projection, best as we can come up with, of NV Energy's projected rates.
Okay. And what can we do as a city to continue to reduce our energy expense?
Well, I, I think you're, you're already looking at everything you can possibly do through Mr. Perigo's efforts in looking at energy efficiency and investing in renewable energy facilities. So I think you're probably already doing everything that you, you need to do in that regard.
And compared to other cities, where would you compare Las Vegas as in the ranks of energy conservation?
Oh, energy conservation, I honestly do not have that statistic. I apologize.
Are we well on our way to, to exceed the national average, or what would be your guess estimate?
Well, I think in large part, some of those efforts depend upon NV Energy's plans. And I do know that they are, they have standards that they need to meet in the future to make sure we, we at least meet that standard.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman, if I could, just to elaborate a little bit more on a couple of the guests, what it does far as our alternative energy. One of the things that we found is with the solar plant that we have planned for out there, going on this program makes it easier to implement that solar plant, because there may be a point in time where if we're generating more energy than we're consuming, then for us to put it back on the grid requires a whole lot more effort to work it out if we weren't on the system, whereas if we go in the Colorado River Commission, we eliminate all those hoops we've got to run. The other thing as part of this, we're putting the advanced metering system out there. And what it does for us, it gives us real-time what our power consumption is of all our equipment. So we can better, more efficiently run our plant out there by seeing what our peaks are on our pumps, and maybe we run those pumps at a different time in the day when the power cost is less, and so it allows us to better manage our operation out there by seeing real-time energy consumption of those meters. So just a couple of things that we get a benefit as far as consuming less energy out at our plant.
And which in turn will provide the city an opportunity to sell energy back in order to receive monies back into our system, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Cervantes, as I understand it, right now, we have a contract with NV Energy or Nevada Power to provide energy to the city, correct?
That is correct.
And we're now being asked to, in effect, get out of that relationship and go into a relationship with the Southern Nevada Water Authority.
Yeah, part of the agreements are just that, is for transmission and distribution. Nevada Power's still there, their system's still there. If for whatever reason, power isn't sufficient coming from the Colorado River Commission or their system is down, we still procure power from Nevada Energy and pay them at the rate that they're, the goal rate for the market.
Okay, and is Nevada Energy pleased with this proposal? Or do they feel that they're going to be losing a customer?
We met with Nevada Energy about a month ago with Edgar and his group. They've been working with the Southern Nevada Water Authority and the Colorado River Commission on this project for a while now, so they're aware of it. You know, certainly, I can't speak for them whether they're pleased or not, but they're aware of it and are very cooperative with us.
All right, I'm a little concerned that we're paying a premium to get out of the relationship, that $2.4 million. Is that, is that going to be the extent of what we're being asked to pay plus $125,000 for the metering? Or are there hidden costs here?
There are no hidden costs, as, as far as I'm aware of. There is a clause in the distribution agreement which allows NV Energy to come back later for any historic regulatory adjustments. For example, if there's an outstanding regulatory adjustment that, that hasn't been settled upon, they could, at some point, come back and do, and adjust the city's exit fees accordingly. I'm not aware of any large regulatory adjustments right now that are outstanding that could impact that.
And when is the payment expected from the city?
The, the cut-over date, planned cut-over date would be October 1st, and so the payment on that would probably be due around November or December of this year.
And where does the money come from?
The money's coming out of our sanitary enterprise fund, and so the, all the cost comes out of that, so it's.
It's in the enterprise fund now?
That is correct.
So it's not going to come out of our general fund?
It doesn't impact the general.
All right, that's important. How accurate are the 8% to 12% projections as far as savings are concerned?
I think that was the best effort that the Colorado River Commission, based on information they've gotten or what they've seen come out of Southern Nevada Water Authority and some of the results they've gotten from that conversion over.
Has our staff verified that?
We worked with them in those numbers, yes.
You feel comfortable with that?
We do, and we're viewing our savings beyond that a little bit more concerned, at least from our perspective. We're assuming that savings beyond, once this is paid back, is more in the $200,000 a year range.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, Mayor Protam, and Councilman Anthony, I guess you can take turns on these if you'd like.
That's fine. And item number 66, I make a motion to call a test for motion approval of this item.
All right, let's vote. Post. Motion carries.
And item number 67, I make a motion to call a test for motion approval of this item and thank Gail for all her hard work.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries.
And item 68, I make a motion to call a test for motion approval of this item and thank Jorge for all his hard work.
Vote, please. Post. Motion carries.
And item 69, I make a motion to call a test for motion approval of this item with all conditions.
All right, thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
All right, let me see where we are. Item 70 is discussion and possible action on a request to install speed humps on Van Buren Avenue between Lamb Boulevard and Blushing Bridge in Ward 3. Mr. Cervantes?
Yes, good morning. This item is the request that the city received to install speed humps in Van Buren between Lamb Boulevard and Blushing Street. We did a traffic study out there. What our traffic study showed was the 85th percent south speed to be 38 miles per hour where the posted speed limit is 25, and we showed a traffic volume of over 1,000 cars a day. We checked with fire services, and this isn't an emergency response route.
All right, thank you.
Okay, from Blushing Bridge East to Nellis, we already have speed humps on Van Buren. This is just putting additional speed humps to the, to the west of Blushing Bridge, and I think it's in order. I think we need to protect those neighbors up there also, so I make a motion to follow or to approve item number 70 with all conditions.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Ross.
Item 71 is R 612009, a public hearing and possible action regarding a resolution authorizing a medium-term obligation and the execution and delivery of documents relating thereto with an amount not to exceed $15 million to finance the cost to acquire, construct, improve, and equip a parking garage adjacent to Symphony Park, and this is in Ward 3. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Ms. Falder.
Mayor and Council, Candace Falder, Deputy Director, Department of Finance and Business Services. This item is for a public hearing for a resolution to issue medium-term obligation bonds for the construction of a parking garage adjacent to City Hall. This is required by our underwriter for the COP documents to show that we intend to move forward with this project. If the City Council elects not to continue with City Hall later, we would suggest that this garage is still needed as part of Symphony Park. It could be moved over, the location could be changed, but we're requesting that your approval for this today. This does require a supermajority vote, so we want it to be heard by all six members here for passage. If there are any questions, Scott Shaver from our Bond Council is here to answer any that you may have.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions that any of us have at this time? Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. It seems premature to, to issue bonds for a parking garage for a City Hall that we really haven't, I mean, the discussion last time was, we need to wait for a study so we can take a look at whether we're going to build the City Hall in the first place, so why not just hold off until we actually decide we're going to build the City Hall?
As I, as I stated earlier, this, we need to move forward with the other things, with move forward with our COFs agreements. If we do not build it with City Hall, we still have the need for parking in this area, and we would move it over towards the Performing Arts Center to do it. This does not actually issue the bonds at this point. This gives us authorization and the first step to move forward. We would still have another meeting to come forward for authorization to issue bonds.
So, Mr. Mayor, so, so the parking garage will eventually have to be built as part of the Symphony Park and the Smith Center?
Correct. Parking that we've, we've recognized the parking need over there, that they would, this is to serve that area, too, adjacent to City Hall, but if we don't go forward with City Hall, they will still have parking needs, and we will have to build a parking garage over there.
And, and this item will further that particular parking garage?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Art, did you want to be here?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To address Councilman Anthony's question, really for two reasons, we're seeking to move forward today. One, as I think Kenny alluded to, we have a need to service Symphony Park. The Las Vegas Performing Arts Center Foundation, the Smith Center project, we have a commitment to provide up to 1,200 parking spaces for their campus. Essentially, we've agreed to provide that parking at no cost to the Smith Center for a five-year period. After that, we could charge the patrons or, for the parking. So we do have a need to move forward today for the, for the parking. I believe that the resolution's been written a way that doesn't lock us into a specific location, to that general area, so we could choose to build a parking garage in Symphony Park itself, or we could choose to move forward, if we do move forward with City Hall, choose to build the parking garage at the offsite location for the new City Hall project at 400 and 500 Main Street. But the resolution does not lock us into that specific location, so it's really the critical path of two projects, not just the City Hall project, but also Symphony Park and the Smith Center for the Performing Arts.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mayor Protam?
Your Honor, I would follow a test for an issue with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Item 72 is discussed impossible action on appointments of council members to various city of Las Vegas and other jurisdictional boards, commissions, and authorities. At this time, I'd like to say that I haven't had a chance to speak to all of the council members as to their desires, as far as what assignments that they would like. I spoke to most. And at this time, I'd like to make the following recommendations for appointment. As a chief local elected officials consortium, I would nominate Councilman Anthony. I don't know whether I've already done this. If I haven't, on the Clean Water Coalition, I would nominate Councilman Ross. We already have Councilman Anthony on the Southern Nevada Health District, and on the Southern Nevada Water Authority, I would ask Councilman Ross to be the alternate to Councilwoman Tarkanian, since you are involved with the Clean Water Coalition. And, and we could, we could move that around, just for today's purposes, because Councilwoman Tarkanian may have some issues which would preclude her from going to the meeting. And I think because you are on the Clean Water Coalition, that you might want to take an interest in that.
Your Honor, I certainly am grateful for that opportunity to serve in that capacity. I would look to legal counsel, Mr. Jervik. I do have a statewide project labor agreement in my role and capacity as a Secretary Treasurer of the Southern Nevada Building and District Council with the Southern Nevada Water Authority. And I think by virtue of that, I would be unable to serve in that capacity, Mr. Jervik.
It certainly is going to create a conflict.
I, I don't want to create any problems. I just thought that it would be a natural, but I understand-
And I understand it, and thank you for the opportunity.
No problem. Then I would like to appoint Councilman Anthony to the alternate position on the water authority.
Thank you.
Thank you. And could I have a motion to that?
Mayor, excuse me, and you want to hold the other items in advance till the next time?
I, I think all the positions are basically filled at this point in time unless the council members desire to move from one board to another. If they have that desire, please contact me, and I'll certainly take it into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. No problem. Do we need a motion?
Yes.
So, your honor.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 73 is the Planning Commission for the Term of Michael E. Buckley. It expires June 2009, and this would be in Councilman Anthony's work. Do you have a appointee that you would like to nominate?
Yes, I do, Mayor.
All right, please.
First of all, I know Mr. Steinman was here a while ago. I don't see him in the audience, but I want to thank him for representing Ward 4 as a planning commissioner. He did an outstanding job, and I know the residents of Ward 4 appreciate him. And I also want to thank Mr. Buckley for serving on the planning commission as interim planning commissioner. And I've met with him, and he's done an outstanding job as a planning commissioner. So I want to thank them for, for serving. I do want to nominate a new planning commissioner for Ward 4. His name is Gus Flengus. Gus, you want to come up to the podium? I want to introduce you. Mr. Flengus is a native Las Vagan, been here all his life, graduated from University of Nevada Reno. He served honorably in the Army as a combat helicopter pilot, and served on a number of missions on the east-west German border during the Cold War, protecting his country. And, and he's served honorably there. He's currently an attorney, runs a successful law practice, Flengus McMillan. He's married, has five kids, two of them I think are one, one-year-old and two-year-old. And he's not a young fellow, but that's the way it goes. And he all, many of you probably know his dad, Bill Flengus. He was a top executive at the Nevada Test Site during the testing of nuclear weapons. And Councilman Ross actually worked with him. And he is a, an expert at drilling holes into mountains and straight down, straight down in order to blow up nuclear weapons and protect his country during the heyday of the test site. And he was actually one of the first guys to recommend building a subway in the city. And I wish we would have done that. Probably have less transportation issues today. Maybe we need to revisit that one of these days. But it's my honor to nominate Mr. Flengus as the planning commissioner for Ward 4.
I just have one question, Councilman, and that is, does his brother Albert have an undue influence upon him?
Not since we were two years old, Your Honor.
All right. Well, that's good, because Albert could lead us astray. Very good. So that's the motion. Let's vote on that.
Just, you know, if I could, I'd like to make a couple of comments. I too know your father very well. I worked with Mr. Flengus out at the Nevada Test Site back in the early 60s. I know that he took on, to me, a dirty job. He did a fantastic job doing it. He got a lot of employment for those people up in Lincoln County and White Plains Counties when they were laid off from their, their jobs up there. He's a tremendous, tremendous man, and I have a lot of respect for your father. And so I don't think that's going to influence my vote for you, but I just wanted that on the record, because he does have, he does have a great father, and I-
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate the comments about my father.
About your brother?
I don't know Albert.
He's good guy, Your Honor, but like I said, we keep his influence at a distance.
But he's, he's the best guy. Okay, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. It's a thankless job that you're, you just have been appointed to, but it's a very important job, because we look through the planning commission to really be our filter and to be our guide as far as these many matters that come before us. And without the planning commission doing what they have done, council meetings will last for hours and hours beyond which they presently last. You really are able to separate the wheat from the chaff. We appreciate that, and we thank you for your service and events.
And I appreciate it very much, and I want to thank Councilman Anthony for nominating me, and thank the council for providing me this opportunity to serve. I've always felt that public service is a great honor, and I promise to work hard and diligently in the best interest of Las Vegas.
Thank you very much.
And I thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Okay, item 74 is Civil Service Board of Trustees, the term of Evelyn Beals, which expires July 6, 2009. This appointment is by any member of the city council. Does anybody have a candidate in mind?
No.
No?
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to reappoint Ms. Beal. She's done a fantastic job on the Civil Service Board, and we'll let her continue.
Very good. Let's vote on that. Post. Motion carries. All right, we'll go to bill number 2009-22, Updates the Business Licensing Provisions of the Municipal Code by Adding Certain Administrative and Service-Related Fees and Adjusting Various License Fees and License Originations Charges. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe Mr. Steed is going to read into the record council's recommend, or council's suggestion to council that we accept a proposed second amendment to bill number 2009-22. And then I have some comments and a brief summary of that bill.
Very good.
Your Honor, would you like the bill read before?
Yes, so that everybody knows what we're talking about.
Very good. Bill number 2009-22, In order to update the business licensing provisions of the municipal code, adding certain administrative and service-related fees, adjusting various license fees and license origination charges, and providing regulated matters.
Okay, today, this bill number 22 is being considered by the city council. This is what we have politely termed our cost-for-service bill. In the bill, we have a recommendation that council adopt a rein inspection fee of one, of $90 for a, an inspection conducted on a business that has been previously noted and noticed for a violation. That fee would go to $120 on a subsequent inspection if we find the violation had not been corrected. Today, we do not have any cost-for-service fees at all assessed to the, to the licensee. In the last several council meetings, we brought before the city council items that were concerns to us, items that council has taken action on, and have made determination on the licensing status of those particular licensees. Up to this point, they have not been charged any administrative fines. And I know that when Devin Smith comes forward with the code enforcement issues, there are fines assessed. And those fines that are assessed are based upon inspections that they conduct and noncompliance with the code enforcement provisions. And we're asking council today to approve this, portion of this bill to allow us to recoup our costs. The other portion of the bill, bill number 2009-22, gives that licensee a right to appeal any assessment of charges or violations found. It does allow the licensee, once invoiced, to be able to contact by, by letter the city manager's office or the designee and appeal those violations that are part of the notice of violation. Within 10 days, or date designated by the city manager's office, they can have their appeal heard, and it can be essentially adjudicated at that point in time. The, the bill also includes some recoup of processing fees from $30 to $50 on a general business license, a reinstatement fee of $50, a nonrefundable temporary license fee for regulated licenses, this would be our mobile food vendors, our ice cream truck, and our Reflexology, temporary licensing fee of $250, and on all other privileged licenses, a temporary licensing fee of $500. It also includes a regular processing fee for a privileged license to go from $30 to $100. And lastly, if the licensees have corporate officers that they wish to have waived from investigation, that fee currently is at $50, and it would be raised to $100 for that waiver of investigation. This bill also includes a reduction in the real estate developer fee. Today, our code requires a 1% monthly sales on the real estate developer who is licensed with the city of Las Vegas. What this bill would do is it would reduce it down to the regular gross, which is today is a sliding scale based upon how much they gross, but at a maximum of .00056. And in bill number 2000-23, we've got a modest increase in that percentage factor.
23 or 22?
In, in bill number 23, we have an adjustment to that particular factor from triple 056 to triple 060, which we'll get to at that point. But this fee, being reduced from 1% to the current fee, reduces it about 650%. So we feel that we're, we're adding to the concerns of the community and to the real estate community by lowering the real estate developer fee in this particular bill. Lastly, the bill has a, an effective date, in the bill, it has an effective date of September 1st, with the exception of Section 7. And that reads, Section 7 is, is really our temporary licensing fees for the regulated and the privileged licenses. And that portion of the bill, Section 7, would be adopted 10 days following the adoption and publication of this bill. I would like to offer one amendment, and that, the rest of the bill, excluding Section 7, have an effective date of January 1st, 2010. This allows staff, and it also allows the industry, to make any adjustments that they have between now and January 1. So that's bill number 2009-22, in brief. And we'll, we'll ask with the change to the effective date that council consider this for adoption.
All right, thank you. As I understand it, there's no recommendation coming with us, is that correct, from staff?
Well- If I could, Your Honor?
Yes.
I could answer that question. When it went to recommending committee, recommending, Councilman Ross voted to not pass. I think Councilwoman Steinman voted to do pass. So as a result of that, they cancel each other out, it became no recommendation. I also want to point for the record that we have not yet read into the record 2009-23. If you'd like me to do that, and consider them both at the same time, I'll be happy to.
No, I don't want to do that.
Okay.
I want to do 2009-22. That's the one that we just heard about. With whom in the private sector did you work with as far as reaching understandings which were acceptable to the city as well as the private sector, as far as bill 22 is concerned?
We, we had at least three, if not four, meetings with many members of the industry, representing the real estate industry, representing commercial development, the Chamber of Commerce. And just recently, in the last 24 hours, we've had, I've had discussions with Mr. Paul Larson, representing the Chamber of Commerce, and we've come to at least a mutual agreement, I believe, on some of the issues in bill number 2009-22.
All right. Does that mean that Mr. Larson, if I call upon him, will say that he agrees in principle with bill 22?
I believe so.
Mr. Larson, let me do that, please. You representing the chamber, Mr. Larson?
Yes, Your Honor.
All right, would be kind enough to identify yourself for the record.
Thank you, Your Honor. Paul Larson, 300 South Fourth Street, representing the Las Vegas Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
First of all, I want to thank city manager Fred Wall, as well as Mr. DiFiore and Ms. Meyer for all the work they've done in addressing our concerns. For example, Section 1C of the bill, the, the appeal provision he talked about, was directly responsive to a concern we had raised. Most of my concerns are directed at bill 23, not 22.
I don't want to get into that now.
I understand.
I'm looking at them completely independently.
But for, as far as bill 22 is concerned, we, we do recognize that it's probably the worst economic time since the Great Depression. And as a result, we have requested that the bill be delayed, the, excuse me, implementation be delayed until January 1st, 2010. Mr. DiFiore has agreed to make that recommendation, and we accept it. The sole exception to that is Section 7, which is the temporary license provision. That actually provides an additional service to businesses, and we think that implementing that within 10 days of, of adoption, if you decide to go forward and adopt this, we find that acceptable.
Very good. Well, I appreciate that, because it's very important to this council, as I understand it, and just general discussions with them. We want to make sure that we're not going to be causing any pain upon the private sector. We, we realize that government has to recover our costs, and this is basically a cost recovery bill in and of itself. And we, we don't want to impose a burden on the private sector until we come out of this economic downturn. So it's good to hear that the chambers work very closely, representing business and private interests with the city. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. DiFiore has really listened to them. That's what I've been told by everybody, that this was a very dynamic process, with the city being very cognizant of the sensitivity of the economic times. So would anybody else like to be heard on 22 at this time?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Your Honor, if I can make a comment about 22?
Certainly.
Since I sat on that recommending committee, and will repeat some of my comments, first let me express to Mr. DiFiore, great job in meeting with the industries. And this bill is aimed at cost recovery. It costs us money to go do business and to help businesses be successful. And I made some comments, and if we get to 23, I'll make the same comments. We, as a city of Las Vegas, and Mayor, you and I have had this discussion, need to do everything we can to make it easy for businesses to be successful here. I want the businesses to leave the county and come to the city. That's me. I want to make it easy for them to do business in the city of Las Vegas and, and help them be successful as we, as we possibly can. Businesses mean jobs. Jobs mean good economy. It's a simple equation. And just a little background there on this item, I actually moved to strike this at recommending committee, but legal counsel wouldn't let me, because it needed to be heard in this format. But if you have gone to the industries, and you have got the approval of the industries, and worked with them, as I think all governments should do when we are making decisions like this, I'd be hard-pressed not to support that, because I did not support it in its form at the recommending committee. And if that, that has changed, and Mr. Larson's indicated that from the chamber, certainly the Realtors, Realtors are okay with it, MYOP, MYOP's okay with it. I think those are my largest concerns. We've got to make the city of Las Vegas a business-friendly environment, so people can be successful. Thank you, Mr. DiFiore.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, good night, please. Not to overemphasize something, but we're calling this a cost recovery bill, and I, I just wanted to emphasize one thing, that the portion of the bill where we're going to charge a rein inspection fee pertains to a business that was found to be not in compliance with a particular code. So if a business does not have a code violation, then that portion of the bill won't even apply.
That's correct.
So it's a business that, for whatever reason, is in violation of one of our codes. There was an initial inspection to find that violation. So this rein inspection fee is the city going out a second time to make sure they're in compliance. Is that accurate?
It is accurate, with the exception of the fact if we find a violation on visit one and go out on visit two, and the violation has been corrected, they do not get assessed that fine.
Okay.
If they, if the violation is there, then they get assessed that fine. If we go out the next time, and the violation has been corrected, they've only been fined that one time.
I understand that. And then finally, the portion of this bill, number 22, that we're calling the Section 7, this was the, a portion of the bill that we created, if you will- Seven, this was the, a portion of the bill that we created, if you will, a few months ago by increasing and enhancing the ability to do business by allowing your administrative approval of some of these privileged licenses before even coming to the council, is that right?
That is correct. It would be a ninety-day administrative license, which, again, today, we're going to try to get them in business as quick as we can by review of this application, and at least they would save two weeks or an additional two weeks that we have to prepare for the city council agenda. Each subsequent temporary license extension would come before the city council for approval.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Anthony?
When I initially looked at this bill, it's really, I mean, to me, it's two separate issues. One is what Councilman Wilson was talking about, it's a fine, it's not really a fee. I mean, I look at it as somebody who's not in compliance with something you're telling them to do, and we're going to fine them a couple of times to get them into compliance. I was fine with that. The part that I was really concerned about was raising fees on businesses, and I was hesitant to support the entire bill because of that, but it's interesting, I haven't received any phone calls or emails or anything on this particular item, and nobody in this room opposes item twenty-two, it sounds like. Is that correct? Okay. All right, well, then I guess I'll support it.
All right, any other comments or questions? By the way, have a motion, please.
Just to clarify, I believe what you would be making a motion on is the proposed Second Amendment that each of you received in advance and approving that, if that's the motion as a Second Amendment with the amendment of the effective date, was it January first of two thousand and ten?
That's correct, with the exception of Section Seven.
Right. In other words, that exception is already in the Second Amendment, we're just changing the effective date for the main body to January first.
That's the motion?
Motion to follow staff's recommendations, Your Honor, for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. I assume that the staff is recommending that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so the record's crystal clear on that. Thank you. All right, item seventy-six is Bill number two thousand nine dash twenty-three. Updates the city's business license fee provisions to increase the gross sales license fee. Include for certain license categories annual fee adjustments based on the Consumer Price Index and the city's growth rate. Adjust license fees for certain alcoholic beverage licenses and add provisions regarding the licensing and regulation of persons who rent or lease certain types of commercial property. Is noted that the amendment version of the bill no longer includes adjustments tied to the city's growth rate. Councilman Ross, do you wish to have the bill read?
I do, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman Todd. Your Honor, Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-three, in order to relating to business license categories and fees, updating license fee provisions to increase the gross sales license fee, including annual license fee adjustments for certain license categories based on the Consumer Price Index and the city's growth rate, adjusting license fees for certain alcoholic beverage licenses, adding provisions regarding the licensing and regulation of persons who rent or lease certain types of commercial property, and provide for the read admittors.
All right, thank you, Mr. DiFiore.
Okay, I'm going to go through this briefly with some changes that we've already discussed that we're going to recommend as an amendment to the proposed Second Amendment. Essentially, the bill itself changes the gross rate for those that pay business license fees on gross revenue reported to us semi-annually. Today, in the city municipal code, there is a sliding scale of fees to be paid on gross revenue all the way up to one-point-two million. And at that point, the licensee would simply calculate their gross revenue and multiply it by a factor of point zero-zero-zero-five-six. In the proposed bill, we have recommended that the sliding scale remain for those businesses that generate gross revenue up to one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. So from one dollar to one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars today, in the proposal, you will not have any business license fee changes at all. The proposal has over one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars generated in gross revenue would pay a factor of point zero-zero-zero-six-zero. So there is a slight increase in the gross revenue factor that is applied to those businesses that generate revenue over one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. The amendments that we have just recently discussed to this bill that I would like to ask the council to consider removing from this particular proposed Second Amendment would be Section Two, which includes a CPI factor for the increase in business license fees based upon flat business license fees. That would be your professional categories, your people that have licenses that pay us a flat fee on an annual basis. Section Two talks about the language in the amendment to adjust those fees on an annual basis based upon the CPI percentage increase annually. We're going to ask that that be removed. In replace of that, not in the bill, but procedurally, what we will do on probably an annual basis every first of July is we will come back to the city council with a proposal on an increase, if we suggest that, where it would be held in a public forum, a public hearing, so that council can consider the industry that is being impacted by these fees and make their determination based upon the industry comments and the proposal that's being recommended by staff. This essentially takes out the automated or automatic CPI factor, and it actually puts it back in a public forum for council consideration.
I'm sorry, Mr. DiFiore. Mayor Goodman?
Certainly.
Just a quick thought, Mr. Gerbick, I possess a business license within the city of Las Vegas. In my other life, I'm a lawyer. Every year, I pay a business license fee. Do I have a conflict of interest?
I don't think you're any more or less affected than anybody else in the same category, so I think with the disclosure, you're fine to vote. I would also like to say that when I read the bill originally, I should have said First Amendment because I understand there's a proposed Second Amendment that's been handed out that Mr. DiFiore just discussed. So in the proposed Second Amendment, Sections Two, Sections Four, Section Six, and Section Nine B would remove the language that would make the bill passed with an automatic CPI percentage factor. All of that would be removed. We would bring it back procedurally before council if we were going to recommend any proposed fee increases on flat bills. The other change that we have made over the course of the last six months, the addition of a business license fee for those businesses or entities that rent or lease commercial property. Originally, the bill had prepared with a recommendation for having those licensees pay the fees based upon gross revenue on a semi-annual basis based upon the fee structure that we have in the code. We've worked with the industry over the last six months, and one of the suggestions that they made was to come forward with a flat fee for those that do rent or lease commercial property. In the Bill Propose Second Amendment, the suggestion that is being made for council consideration is a fee structure where those that rent or lease commercial property, less than two-hundred-thousand square feet, would pay an annual fee of one-hundred dollars. Two-hundred-thousand-and-one square feet to five-hundred-thousand square feet would pay an annual fee of two-hundred dollars. Five-hundred-thousand-and-one square feet to one-million square feet, an annual fee of three-hundred dollars. One-million-and-one square feet to two-million square feet, an annual fee of four-hundred dollars. And two-million-and-one square feet and over, an annual fee of five-hundred dollars. Now, this is for the developer-owner who is leasing or renting space to tenants and other individuals. It does not include those that own their own building and occupy that building and are paying business license fees to the city for that particular operation. So we have to go through and determine on all the commercial properties that we have, is it owner-operated or is it just being leased out to tenants? Many times in the past, this has come forward as a, comments have come forward as this is double taxation. It is not. What we're really doing is we're asking the person that's conducting business by contracting with that tenant that is renting or leasing commercial property to pay a business license fee like everybody else. That tenant pays us a business license fee for the service or the sale-type business that he or she operates here in the city. So it really isn't double taxation. This bill is also going to be asked to be considered for adoption with an effective date of January first, two thousand and ten.
Does that conclude your remarks?
For the time being, yes.
All right, I'll tell you something that has been weighing heavily on me, and that is, these are the most extraordinary and toughest of times for the economy. I'm advised, although I pray that it's not true, but I have every reason to suspect that it is true, that the next wave of this horror show is going to hit the commercial Realtors. Right now, we're suffering from the residential Realtor point of view, but the next wave is going to affect those who have these commercial establishments. And already, we see that there are empty buildings throughout our community that were anticipated to be leased. Now, the way I read this proposed bill, if in fact, somebody, and I'll use the World Market Center because they were kind enough to speak to me yesterday, assume that the World Market Center, the first building, which is, what, eight-hundred-thousand square feet? Let's assume that all their tenants move out with the exception of one tenant that they're leasing to. Are they paying on eight-hundred-thousand square feet or are they just paying on the area which the one tenant is occupying?
They would be paying on, in the current proposal, be paying on the eight-hundred-thousand square feet.
And I think that's onerous, and I think it's burdensome, particularly with the economy being the way it is. I couldn't support this unless there was an amendment which reflected that the only square footage that's to be considered as far as the flat fee is concerned is that which is actually leased from which the landlord is making a profit or breaking even or whatever.
One thing I did not read into the record is we do have a provision in that type of licensing. It says that they'll pay in advance for each separate building for which a license is required or which is covered by a multi-building license. So we have the opportunity to say, in the world market situation or in other situations where the buildings are contiguous, to put them on one license. So we would include, in that particular situation, all of the square footage for all three buildings for one license now.
And I appreciate that, and when you look at the cost, you know, it's not going to break somebody, but this is symbolic too, in a way, whether or not the city, as Councilman Ross is talking about, wants to be the most business-friendly and whether we are imposing during these very, very tough times, onerous conditions upon those who choose to do business in the city of Las Vegas. I think that's one of the policy decisions that we're going to have to involve ourselves in as far as this vote is concerned. But if that could be amended, as I suggest, to just cover that space which is actually being leased, I would be more favorably disposed at this point. But I'm happy at this point to listen to folks who'd like to be heard here. How many would like to be heard on this? All right, one, two, three, four, five. Okay, let's put a three-minute timeline, try to get your remarks before us and try not to be repetitive and plausible.
Mayor Goodman, I'm sorry. Could I just ask a couple of clarifying questions before we take public comment?
Sure.
I think maybe, Betsy, this is for you or Mr. DiFiore. On an annual basis, how much money do we think that we will receive if this bill goes into effect? How much money we going to raise?
On an annual basis in its entirety? That's very difficult because, I'll tell you, the numbers that we have taken were taken from fiscal year oh-seven and oh-eight, when the economy was a lot better. I would say, an estimated guess would be probably about seven-hundred-thousand dollars.
Okay, and then, secondly, we have a number of capital projects that we have planned for this fiscal year, not to mention the coming years, that we could consider looking to try and recoup or try and, we're trying to raise money, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to do it in a fair way, but the net effect of our efforts is to raise money and to, as you said, Jim, maybe take in about seven-hundred-thousand dollars. How much money would you say we have allocated for fiscal year ten towards capital projects? That's a tough one. I mean, I'm catching off guard, Betsy, and I'm sorry for that.
No, it's okay.
But we have to make, like Mayor Goodman says, decisions on whether to pass on our revenue shortfalls, because that's the way I look at it. You know, the state of Nevada look to local governments to make up for their shortfalls, and that's kind of what we're doing here. So my question is, do you have any idea how much money we have set aside fiscal year ten for capital projects?
We have about a one-point-six-billion-dollar, five-year capital improvement program. We typically spend somewhere around one-hundred-and-fifty to two-hundred million a year in capital projects, although much more is authorized in each given year, we just can't spend it quite that fast. I do think it might be worthwhile to just kind of roll back a little bit what we've been trying to accomplish in maintaining our fiscal integrity as a city, and why we would even be here bringing a fee bill, if you will, in the middle of a very serious economic As you all are aware, we had a special council meeting back in October where we rolled out the results of a variety of work that we had done to evaluate how we could try and erase our structural deficit over the next five years. And we brought a series of recommendations to you. Employee wage concessions, efficiency changes, program reductions, elimination of vacant positions, freezing and unfunding positions, freezing but leaving them funded positions, as well as a whole series of consolidations within the city of Las Vegas to try and reduce our overall costs. As you all are aware, our budget over the last four years has been pretty much flat. Our revenues have been decreasing, we've been cutting as much as we can. Last year alone, we cut close to ten percent of our overall budget through two mid-year adjustments. We also, at this point, have frozen and unfunded close to three-hundred-and-fifty positions out of a three-thousand-person organization. So well over ten percent, close to eleven percent of all our employees. I think we've been very reasonable and responsible in making adjustments on the expenditure side of the ledger. In our proposals back in October, we also suggested that we look at the revenue side of the ledger, because there are several fee schedules that hadn't been touched for decades in some cases. And I think everybody acknowledged, there is no good time. There isn't. When times are great, nobody wants to change. When times are bad, nobody wants to change. Nobody wants to change. The reality is the legislature, and I don't mean to blame them, but the legislature has ended us a very difficult position. We have absolutely no control over the revenue side of our picture with the exception primarily of fees. Period. We have control of about eighty-seven percent of the revenue, thirteen percent of the revenues that come in to the city of Las Vegas, primarily made up of fees. The other eighty-seven percent is controlled by formula, which is controlled by the state, both on sales tax and property tax. So quite frankly, they hand you a very difficult position. You have very few choices on the revenue side of the ledger to make, and none of them are easy. This is one of them before you today. In October, we suggested that we review all of our fee structures. We're systematically doing that. We're looking at parks and recreation, we're looking at development fees, we're looking at business license fees, fire and rescue fees, all of them, and systematically bringing them forward to you for your consideration. Because on that side of the ledger, we don't really have anywhere else to go, honestly. We've tried to be reasonable, responsible, and fair in working with the, with all of the industries that have been impacted or may be impacted. I think there's been an open dialogue as a result of that. I have to say that nobody's going to be happy as a result of this bill today. There is no way to make anybody totally happy. It's just like you said yesterday, Mayor, sometimes the best resolutions are the ones where no one walks away happy. This isn't everything we asked for. We were hoping for at least two million in fees. We were hoping for at least $2 million in fees, that we could spread out over four or five years, so we'd get to that $8 million, $10 million target. This doesn't get us there. At the end of the day, we are still going to need to make adjustments, long-term, as you all are painfully aware, in how we manage the city financially. I know I've talked with Mr. DeFiore, I think it's very clear from taking the CPI factor out, and automatic growth adjustment in this bill, we'll be teeing this conversation up for you each and every year, as necessary, instead of having something automatic. That's been a part of our discussion, it's been an ongoing issue for the Chamber of Commerce. I think it's a reasonable accommodation, and if we have a good case, then the public will understand. If we don't, we won't. So, I know that was a long answer to your question, Councilman Wolfson, but I think it's really important to get that on the record, because our choices at the local government are severely hampered by the way we are structured at a state level, the way we are chartered, the way we are authorized fiscal responsibility. Your choices are severely limited. This is one of your few choices that you can go to, to help bring your budget back in balance, and eliminate your structural deficit.
Mayor Goodman, real quickly, because I'm the one that did prompt that answer. I appreciate what you just said, I agree with everything you just said, that we tasked you to do this. Last October, we directed you to look at the various things that we could do to raise revenue, if you will, and this is one of those things you've done. But I'd like to read, just real quickly, an email that I received, and I think I probably received more emails on this topic than any other topic so far, and I know all of us have received a lot of emails. But this constituent says, "After 55 years of my family, 55 years of my family, and my self-employment in Las Vegas, I think our good business climate is over. There will be nothing left in this declining revenue-for-government environment after the local, state, and national leaders raise taxes. I am moving very seriously yours, and goodbye." So, what my only point is, and I'm not going to make a decision until I hear from everybody, is that, that sounds good, Betsy, you know, we've been fair to industries and everything like that, we're dealing with people here. And, you know, my next question might be, Jim, is you said that we're going to raise about $700,000, approximately. How many people are affected? How many people are going to have to pay more money? 200, 300, 2,000 people? How many people, if this bill were to pass, would be affected?
We would probably have, it would affect probably about 15,000 business licenses. That could be one owner that owns multiple licenses, but as of the suggestions today, the CPI factor being removed, takes that factor out of the flat fee licenses. So the flat fee business license owner does not have any change in his business license fees, based on this bill. Right now, today, as it's proposed, it's the person that is paying business license fees on gross sales. The small businessman, or the businessman that has a business that pays, or grosses up to $180,000 semi-annually, his fees don't change. It's over $180,000 that it will increase their fees, based upon that percentage factor we've talked about.
But you would still agree, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, that thousands of people are going to be affected, that their fees are going to be increased?
That's correct, but at the max of 7%.
All right, I'd like, as long as we're talking about that, let's get it all out on the table, and let's start talking about facts, and that is, we have 350 employees whose positions we have not filled, correct? Who are no longer working for the city. And the 700,000, even though it sounds like peanuts in the scheme of things, that's seven city employees. If we don't do this, and I'm not saying we will, or we won't, I mean, seven city employees will probably not be able to be employed, and those seven employees won't be able to provide the services that our constituents expect us to provide as a city, which we have been providing, and this is not an easy situation. This is a situation where it's a give and take. That's why I'm happy that Mr. DeFiore worked with the industry, and got their input, and tried to get a resolution which is fair to everybody. But this is not a one-sided affair. We know what our expenses are, and now we're trying to look at what our revenue can be, recognizing the very difficult times, and the burden that we'll be putting on the private sector. And that's what, this is a philosophical discussion about where we're going. Is that simple? Yes, sir?
My name is Kevin Higgins, I reside at 10,100 West Charleston Boulevard. I am the president of SIOR, which is the Society of Industrial and Office Realtors.
Excuse me one moment, I want to put the timer on, so I'm fair to everybody. Would you do that? Okay, fine. Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Eating into my time already.
No, no, I won't do that.
I live in the city of Las Vegas, I have my offices in the city of Las Vegas, I have businesses in the city of Las Vegas. So, from a real estate standpoint, from a tavern owner's standpoint, from a residential standpoint, I'm across the board on this. I understand what the city's going through, the state's going through, and the world's going through right now. However, I understand you have the ability already to levy these fees, or impose these fees, but I would say that the timing is, couldn't be worse right now, for everyone, it couldn't be worse. I understand that the fee structures have been, quote, "negotiated" from the gross rental to a dollar per square foot, which, at least I hear, you're at least talking about changing that a little bit, but just because a fee structure, the ability to obtain the money is easier, doesn't make it better to impose those fees. The reality is that owners and tenants are hurting in this town. The reality is that the foreclosure for the commercial real estate market is coming, and it's coming big. Currently, we have over 23% vacancy in office, we have over 12% to 13% vacancy in industrial, we have over 12% to 13% vacancy in retail projects, and so on, in the commercial real estate in Las Vegas, right now. And that's going to grow, in the next six months. You will see that devastate businesses. So I'm asking you, as a board, to not pass this, to understand that we are in an economic time that we, none of us have ever seen before, and this will just exacerbate the situation. The other thing I will say, as a realtor, it's very difficult to have the city put the onus of reporting, if you will, what spaces we have listed to the city, and in fact, almost working for the city as their agent. So I would ask you to not pass this, and look at it maybe another time, and by the way, January of 2010, it's not going to be any better, it'll be worse. Thank you.
Mayor Goodman, please. Sir, may I ask you, if you don't mind, because this is what I'm trying to get out, and Mr. DeFiore, in the last couple of weeks, I've asked you to give me some examples, and you have, but I'm going to kind of use you as a little guinea pig, if you don't mind. I don't want you to divulge too much personal information, but you just told us that you are a business owner here in the city of Las Vegas, you have different business interests, you also own a residence, or whatever, in the city. Without getting too personal, how would this bill affect you? How much money out of your pocket, in what different ways would this bill impact?
Well, first of all, it impacts me, the tavern fee, the last one, additional $25,000, if I open another tavern within the city of Las Vegas, which I may or may not do now, because of the economic times and some additional fees. The other thing is, if I owned an office building right now, and I want to try to lease it out, last year it was $2.50 to lease that out. Today, maybe I can give it away at a dollar, if I get someone to go there. So every penny literally counts, to where if I'm in the city of Las Vegas, and across Charleston is the county, that additional penny that the guy in the county's going to give off, he will take the building away, that tenant away from me, the only one who's out there looking right now. So what do I lose? What's 10,000 square feet at $2 per square foot, times five years? That's $600,000, just on that one lost lease of 10,000 feet? That's all. That's one lease that I lose, besides the other fees and impacts. It's, I've been telling you, the groundwater will swell on this thing, more than you ever know, and also, the implementation of it, trying to track what's vacant today versus what was vacant yesterday, versus what's going to be vacant in six months from now, I mean, that's difficult enough for professionals to do, which we have in our office that do every quarter, let alone the city taking on that task, and trying to put that.
You make a good point, you talk about whether a tenant occupies space in the city versus the county. If that same tenant that doesn't rent from you, sir, goes to the county, what kind of fees would that tenant be expected to pay over in the county?
Well, I don't know what the tenant fee would pay, they would probably pay based upon the type of business that they have, but the county does have a commercial renting and leasing classification, that we have a list of about 119, probably a very small list of what should be licensed, and their license fees are based upon gross revenue. When we proposed it, we took the exact same language from the county, and this is where we've worked with the industry, where we've taken away, we've addressed their concerns with reporting, and accounting, and everything else, and we felt we came up with a very moderate business license fee for that particular classification that the county does, base it on gross revenue.
But Jim, this is a new fee, is that right?
It is a new fee to the city, the county already has it.
So what you're saying is, that what we're doing is, we're incorporating a formula that the county already uses, but we don't have this kind of fee today.
We don't.
So on this particular fee, if you want to call it that, the city is more attractive today without this bill in this regard than the county is?
Well, I think even with this fee being proposed, I think it's still attractive. Mr. Higgins talked about 10,000 square feet, whether it's vacant or occupied, rented or leased, but that fee for 10,000 square feet would be a $100 annual fee. And on that same 10,000 square feet, if he was to be licensed in the county, he may be paying 10 times that amount to the county for that.
Let's be fair, the county has more than 119 businesses and buildings within it. They are not collecting this fee. Just as you are not imposing it currently, but you have the ability to, they might, for some reason, have 119 people paying it, but again, there are thousands of owners and businesses, so they're not paying it. They're not imposing that fee. The county is not strictly enforcing that, because in the 25 years that I've been doing this, I have never seen a tenant pay that. And to bring up 119 is sort of ridiculous, when we have 2 million people here in town. And so, the implementation is new, it will cost the city at the end of the day, because people will go to other municipalities, or, in the case of that gentleman of 55 years, they'll go elsewhere. Where that is, I don't know, but elsewhere.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please. Three-minute timer, please. Did you want to be heard?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kip Cooper, representing the Greater Las Vegas Association of Realtors. First, I would like to thank Mr. DeFiore and the staff, because this has been a very long process. We've gone through, there've been a lot of very good changes throughout both '22 and '23, a lot of which we were able to recommend. The one bone of contention that we still hold is this tax on the commercial leasing. And as you've heard from one gentleman, and you'll hear from a couple others, we're in really serious times. We're sympathetic to the staffing needs of the city, we're sympathetic to the budgetary needs of the city, but from the realtor's perspective, we've lost 3,000 members over the last year and a half, 3,000. So those are people that went to school, they engaged in putting capital into their small businesses, and sometimes large businesses, they paid their city license fees, they paid their state license fees, they've paid their professional and occupational license fees, but they couldn't hang on. So we've lost 3,000 of those folks, which are very important to this city. And the problem that we're seeing now is that we're facing similar situations in the commercial market. You just heard some statistics, we've lost, we're at 22% vacancy in office space. We've got a huge vacancy increase in industrial and in retail space. So we see all of those things happening. There's over 1.8 million square feet of commercial space right now that's in jeopardy of foreclosure at the current time. So these are really difficult times for this marketplace, and we're asking that you strike both Sections 8 and 9 of this bill, to give breathing room to the industry, and really to stop further issues and concerns that are going to occur as a result of it. One of the things that was mentioned here is, you know, this is a flat and simple, it's a tax on investment. You know, if you own your property, whether it's leased or not, under this ordinance, you're going to have to pay that fee. Now, if you only have a 1,500-square-foot building, you're going to pay the same amount of money as somebody that's got a 200,000-square-foot building, under this proposal. The folks that are going to be most affected by these fees are the small business people, or the business people that have had to downsize their business, and unfortunately have to lay people off. So they're looking for smaller spaces. They're going to be taxed at a higher percentage rate than larger places like World Market Center. The other real issue here, besides the fairness, is where people are actually using Realtors, or using other folks to conduct the business. And a lot of talk about, because you own a commercial piece of property, that you're in business in the city of Las Vegas. Well, no, that's an investment. Most of those people, probably 90% of people that own their own property, they hire a commercial realtor to go out and handle the management and the leasing of that property. Those people are already licensed in the city of Las Vegas, they're already paying a license fee to the city of Las Vegas. So that's why we've talked a lot about double taxation in this. And there's nothing that exempts a person who owns a building, who goes to someone that leases it for them, because that's their occupation and their business, from this original fee that the city's looking to impose.
Let me hear from the next one. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, thank you. John Ramis, actually wearing two hats, just given the spirit of the discussion here. Not sure I need six minutes, but one representing NAOP, Southern Nevada Chapter, not to duplicate things, but reiterating that we do not support it at this time, given the general nature of the industry right now. But on the other side, as a prince, basically an executive with one of the larger commercial real estate owners, not just in the city, but in Southern Nevada, representing probably just over 1,300 small businesses primarily, and touching on what Councilman Wolfson wanted to hear, is that my time over the last 12 months is primarily spent not growing businesses, but keeping businesses alive. And it's unfortunate, it's a sign of the times. What we're clearly seeing, and I've been spending time on it, is really, $50 does make a difference to these small businesses, these individuals, $100 makes a big difference. And that letter that you read clearly will put these businesses out of business, or these companies out of business. Whether they go somewhere else remains to be seen, they may not even survive. So it's a delicate situation, it's also a time that this will set a precedent for other municipalities, and they're looking very closely at the decisions made here. So I do encourage you to really think about this, and, you know, it's something that we can revisit at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good afternoon, my name is Charles Weber, and I live at 6601 Welcome Lane. I own a company called Good Deeds. What we do is a lot of consulting on investment properties. I've spent a lot of time on this, I've been involved with investment property all my professional life. What I see happening is, not so much is the owners of the properties, and so on and so forth are affected, are the moms and pops businesses, the maintenance providers from your landscapers, your sweep, well, your sweepers don't have a business license, porter service, striping companies, all these being hit very, very hard, because these people are going to have to make decisions. When it gets more competitive, in which I tend to agree with all of you, when I went to the International Council of Shopping Center, that is the biggest thing coming, is whenever this wave hits, there's going to be a lot of decisions made. The harder you guys make it for commercial property, the harder you're going to make it for all the companies that maintain these properties. Because I've already seen where we've had to readjust budgets just now, and it really hasn't hit. But you pass this, you're going to make it a lot more difficult for the long run. I mean, if any of this makes sense to you, I guess, but you'll end up hurting the smaller businesses that do the support service to investment property. I mean, it's that simple.
Anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Your Honor. Paul Larson, 300 South Forest Street, representing the Las Vegas Chamber of Commerce. Before I get to my primary remarks, I just want to thank, again, Mr. DiFiore, Ms. Meyer, and especially City Manager Betsy Fretwell, with the amount of discussion we've had on this particular ordinance, specifically with regard to the amendments proposed by Mr. DiFiore, the elimination of the automatic raises in the fees based upon CPI. We especially appreciate that, because we believe that any raise of fees needs to be presented in a public hearing, needs to be presented in a transparent manner, and needs to be justified by a demonstration to the council's satisfaction, that there's the increased costs of regulating a particular business or business activity needs to be offset by a raise in fees. If that demonstration hasn't been made, then we're simply talking about a tax. And I think in this case, the cat's out of the bag. We're simply talking about a tax as opposed to a raise costs of regulating any particular business or business activity. That being said, we appreciate all of the proposed amendments made by Mr. DiFiore, and if this council does decide to go forward with this proposed bill, we would recommend that you accept all of those amendments. But at the end of the day, this is the worst economy that we've seen since the Great Depression, and businesses in the city of Las Vegas just faced, in the last legislative session, an additional increase in their taxes. So we're not simply talking about an additional increase of taxes to the city of Las Vegas. There's a number of checks that businesses have to write. You're just one of them. And those checks all have to be bigger in the coming year. So based upon that, because of the economic times and the increased taxes that businesses are facing outside of the one you're contemplating today, we would ask that if you decide to implement this tax, that you do it on a delayed fashion, that we would ask you to wait at least mid-2010 to fully implement it. We do appreciate Mr. DiFiore's, I think it's actually in the draft, proposed delay till January of 2010, but we think it should be delayed beyond that. So-
Mr. Larson, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mayor Goodman, please. Is Mr. Gerbit there, or no?
Mr. Steed is.
Okay, Mr. Steed. Paul, you spoke to us, sounded like a lawyer, and you raised an issue that I really hadn't thought about, and I'd like to get some input from the city, and that is, you said that there must be some sort of, and if you could repeat it, I'd appreciate it, rational nexus between the city's need to do this. Could you repeat that? Because if we can't show that, then it's really a tax versus a fine. And we in the business of, do we have the ability, to the legal right, to do what he's talking about?
If I can take a swing at it first. I'm not making the claim that you don't have the legal ability to do this. I am making the claim that if you're going to raise fees for the purposes of raising revenue, and in fact, the bill at Section, I believe it's 10, subsection A.2, makes it very specific that this fee increase is not intended to cover the cost of increased, cost of regulating. May I continue?
Go ahead, please.
It's not intended to cover the cost of regulating a particular business, much like the fees that were increased in Bill 22 were. Instead, this is intended to generate revenue. The city manager made it very clear that that was the intent. The section I referred to, 10A subsection 2, makes it very clear that this is intended to generate additional revenue, and I'm reading from the bill, for providing city services, including police and fire protection, the construction, maintenance of highway, streets, and other infrastructure, and recreational activities, and cultural events. In other words, the intent of this bill is to raise fees, to generate revenue, to cover all these other things, not to cover the costs of regulating a particular business or business activity. From a traditional sense, a fee is intended to recapture the cost of regulating a business or business activity. If it exceeds that, then it's a tax. And in many states, there's a specific prohibition against raising fees beyond what is necessary, reasonable and necessary, to regulate a particular business. Here, it's not quite as cut and dried. From a philosophical standpoint, we're simply saying, the Chamber of Commerce believes that if you're going to call it a tax, or raise it as a tax, call it a tax, don't try and disguise fees, or a fee increase, as necessary for the regulation of a particular business.
With your permission, Mayor Goodman, Mr. Steed, could you weigh in on this?
Sure.
Understand what I want you to weigh in on?
Let me try, and when I don't hit it, let me know. The city has authority under both charter and state law to impose taxes, sometimes called taxes, sometimes called fees. The legislature doesn't really, as Paul pointed out, doesn't really, isn't really consistent, for revenue, for regulation, or for both. There are some types of businesses, First Amendment businesses come to mind, that your cost, your fees that you can charge them, or the taxes, have to be no more than that which it costs you to regulate them. Others, you can use the licensing of business for revenue. And so you have full authority to, with respect to the items that are in this bill, to charge a tax or a fee, call it what you will, beyond the cost of regulating. I think what Mr. Larson was saying was, he would like to make sure that you, from a philosophical standpoint, when you're going to increase those, you bring it before a public hearing. You have the ability to do that with a public hearing or without.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. Lauren Calvert-Arnold for World Market Center. First and foremost, we would like to thank Mr. Jim DiFiore. There's been multiple iterations of this amendment, and we have done quite a bit of communication with Jim, and he's been very responsive and very helpful, so we would like to recognize his efforts. We would also like to recognize the city's needs and the purposes of this bill as legitimate and necessary, especially in light of the economic situation that the city's facing, and what has happened at the state legislature. And we are in favor of this amendment with a few caveats. And a lot of that is due to, again, Mr. DiFiore's working with us, so we do appreciate that again. Some of the problems that we're facing with this amendment have to do with the vagueness of the terminology. We want to ensure that some of this ambiguity is addressed on the front end, rather than having to revisit these issues down the road. We realize that this is something that we'll be probably dealing with with some time to come, and would like to make sure that the terminology is, has a certain amount of predictability to it. Some of the terms that we are having issue with are the definition of building. With World Market Center, we're unsure if this would apply to parking structures, to some of the tents on the property. So again, we're a little uncertain about what would be encompassed within this amendment and this ordinance. The other issue we have is how we will do the measurements. In the world of landlord-tenant law, you have usable space versus rentable space. Usable space includes, or usable space, I'm sorry, is measured from interior wall to interior wall of a building, or I'm sorry, a unit of a building that is actually being rented out. Rentable space, I'm sorry, I keep getting them backwards, includes things such as common areas, the area for conduit. And what it really comes down to, as a standard within the commercial setting, is a 7 to 10 ratio between usable and rentable space. So if we look at our chart here, if it was a million square feet of usable, or I'm sorry, of rentable space, that would equate to about 700,000 of usable space. So there is quite a discrepancy there. The other thing we would just like to point out is that although the director does have the authority to cover more than one separate building, it's very specific in subsection C that both of these buildings would have to be on the same parcel. So the director wouldn't have the discretion if the buildings were on separate parcels. I'm assuming that's going to apply to many of the, oh, may I finish?
If you finish quickly.
I will finish very quickly. Just, I guess, in closing, these amounts aren't going to make or break World Market. We are just looking for some predictability in this, and we do support this amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
My name is Mike Dunn. I'm a commercial real estate broker here in town. Part of my issue is lack of clarity with some of these fees and how we're dealing with it. And I think it, she just touched on it with rentable and usable as one example. I think another example is the various type of lease structures, where you've got triple-net, modified gross, and full-service gross leases, that are impacted on how a landlord can pass through expenses to those tenants. And if you're using gross receipts, triple-net lease is going to appear financially much different than a full-service gross lease, for example. And I think some of those items need to be addressed. I think one other point that needs to be brought up and considered is our business climate here, and our appeal to investors outside of our state to continue to invest here in Las Vegas. I would estimate, off the top of my head, somewhere between 60 and 70% of our ownership is based out of state. And probably one of our largest owners, commercial owners, is based out of Chicago here with General Growth, who acquired the Ross Companies, which acquired Hughes. So it can impact us beyond just the raising of fees. And I'd like some of those items to be considered, and maybe some greater clarity brought to some of the specifics on the commercial side.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, that was not a public hearing, but it was with the effort that has gone into this between Mr. DiFiore and his office and the private sector, and the concern that it was worthwhile and necessary that we allow some comment to be heard. At this time, Councilman Ross, because you were present at the recommending, it would be your motion.
Before I make that motion, Your Honor, first of all, let me express to all of the industries involved that you understand what we're trying to do. And Councilman Wilson asked the right questions when it came down to why are we here today discussing this? Ms. Fretwell, the direction this council gave your staff in October, you know, help us find some additional funds, help us cut costs here at our local government, do everything we can to streamline this machine. We're trying to operate as a business as well, to the best of our ability. Little revenue generated. I want to first also recognize the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails that I know I personally got, and I think all of our offices did get, that is not in the backup, but needs to be, in opposition to this bill. Also, several letters in my office from various organizations and business entities. One of them that caught my eye, and I haven't verified this, but I'll go on its value. NAOP represents an industry that's lost over 4,000 members due to businesses closing. Is that a good number? 4,000? That's a huge number. Looking at our fiscal impacts statement in the backup information, Mr. DiFiore, you've done a fabulous job to get to this point, because you've done what I've asked you to do at the recommending committee. You've gone to the industries, you've included them, and they've all recognized that. You've done a fabulous job by doing that. And you've been tasked with a huge burden. Go out there and find us some money. How are we going to do it? Call it a tax, call it fees, whatever you call it. This is a little different than the previous bill, because we're not just trying to recover costs, we're actually trying to generate some revenue. I first supported this many, many months ago, when you came to me and said, "We haven't raised fees on this, on that," and for a long, long time, well, goodness sakes, we should. And I supported that. The economy was different at the time, when I supported that. And I made it clear to the industries at the last recommending committee meeting, that when times are good, and they will be good again, when times are good, we're going to be having this discussion again. Because that's the time, Betsy, and I know you said, you know, never's a good time. Never's a good time to do this. It's never a good time to raise fees, to raise, to have this discussion. But I want to let the industry leaders here today be on notice, that we're going to have this conversation again when the economy is good, when you have 100% occupancy, when your businesses are thriving, we're going to have to have this conversation again. I also want to reflect on Mr. Cooper's comments about losing 3,000 Realtors in this valley. And without verifying your numbers, I'm going to take you for face value. That is significant in regards to this. I think that by us as a city of Las Vegas, trying to increase our revenue by 700,000, and in your statement it says 556,000, that those 15,000 businesses, Mr. DiFiore, write a check to the city of Las Vegas to save our city for $100. There's 1.5 million there. There's got to be a better way to do this at this time. But that's a significant increase, because we're not going to get to that $2 million bill that you were looking for, or we were looking for as a council. We're not going to get there. I would be hard-pressed to make it any more difficult for the businesses, the property owners, anybody doing business in the city of Las Vegas. Little background, those of you that weren't with the recommending committee, again, I tried to strike this item, and our great city attorney wouldn't let me do that either. Apparently, you can't do that at a recommending committee. But that was the position I had. And you've done a fabulous job getting us here today, and you know that. I think we're going to have a bigger fiscal impact. If businesses aren't in business, and people aren't working, where's the numbers in regards to that loss of tax revenue? I don't see that, and I don't know if you can even come up with that number. But the more businesses that are in business, are paying their taxes today, and the big tax pie we get, the little sliver we get out of that, is significant. So I think there's a much bigger fiscal impact here. Unemployment numbers. The businesses close, people are out of work, they're going to go file for unemployment. Those are additional costs and burdens upon the state and the rest of our infrastructure. So I have a hard time balancing this out to work enough for the city. Your staff has done a phenomenal job getting us where we are today, cutting our costs, fundamental service review, tough, tough challenges we've had to take on as a city council. Can't deny that. And you've done exactly what this council's asked you to do. I think all of us knew we'd be here one day, where we'd have to make some difficult decisions. If the business economy was different, if our economy entirely was different, I could support this. But my motion is going to be, and this is what I'd like to do, Your Honor, I would like to make a motion to table this item until time that you've had more time to work with the industries that are affected. And I would also challenge the industries, engage yourselves in these discussions with the city of Las Vegas. We need your help. We don't want you to be out of business. We want you to be successful, and we're going to be here to help you do that. But please, plan on sitting down with Mr. DiFiore and his staff, the city manager's office, in attempting to do that, by tabling this agenda item. Go ahead.
I wanted to let you know, Councilman, that if it's tabled, this bill will die. So I think that there are probably two options. Obviously, one is to go with some amendment today, which I don't know if the council's comfortable with, or two, let it die. And then if there is some motivation to bring it back in a future form that is improved or has more consensus, we can do that. But letting it die doesn't mean it couldn't be brought back in the future.
And with, Your Honor, that was my intention by tabling that, but if the legal counsel tells us that it's going to die, then today I'd like this bill to die, and that's my motion. I don't know how else to put it.
Okay. Is there any discussion before we vote?
Strike. I can strike it here?
I've sat here and just kind of listened, and I appreciate-
Right. I want to have discussion before we vote.
Yeah, I appreciate the questions that have been asked. I appreciate those members from the public who've been here today and put their ideas and their concerns on record. I represent an older area of Las Vegas. I go by shopping centers that have been built, that have one or two tenants in there at very, very, very lowered rates. I see older shopping centers that are sitting vacant. I've had probably five or six box grocery stores move out, award three. It is hard. And the thing that has been brought out is, those of us that are in business, we are paying. You know, we're paying a state tax, we're paying the city tax, we're paying our sewer bills. We do have many, many charges that we try to keep current. It is hard to stay in business. It's impossible to start up a new business. So I don't know when this second floor stewardess is going to come in and help us get new businesses started. I know that there's many, many, many people out of work, and I know that I've had a lot of people come to me and ask me if there's any way I could help them find something to do. there's any way I could help them find something to do. I've been briefed on this, this, this item here through three different times. I've told staff as late as last Monday that it was really, really hard for me to support something like this. I wasn't like Councilman Wilson. I didn't feel like I had a, a problem. I, I know I am a small business person, but sometimes you, you, you kind of forget about that when you, you start dealing on the larger items. This here is, I met with the people from World Market Center, and their, their spaces they're talking about. I got five hundred square feet, so, you know, it don't, it really, it really doesn't affect me. But what does affect me is I want to make sure that we do everything right for the city of Las Vegas. And we did ask staff to help us find some money, be creative. I appreciate Mr. DiFiore and his staff, what they've done. Sometimes it's really hard to find that middle and satisfy them and satisfy them. I don't have a problem making a decision. But this one here, it was going to be hard for me. Councilman Ross, I think, has kind of led me down that path where it's going to be easy today. So, I want to thank him for that also. I, I can support tabling this. If I thought that the money we're going to create by passing this ordinance is going to save the city of Las Vegas from bankruptcy, or not being devastated by something, then I, I would probably support it. But that's probably the only reason. I don't see us that we're in that dire straits yet today, so I'm going to be able to support striking this item.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard before we vote? Councilperson?
Just a couple of closing thoughts. You know, Betsy, I look at your face, and Jim too, and I almost, almost feel bad.
She had you crying.
Because six or eight months ago, as we've commented, we directed you to do something, and you did it. You did it. But I think this process helped flush it out. And I guess what we're saying is we need to look elsewhere. That's the bottom line, whether it be capital project funding or, or whatever else. But it's hard for us to penalize or pass it on. You know, for months and months and months, we criticized the state, you know, what are they going to do to us? How much money is the state going to take from us? And now that's what we're doing. So, you know, I, I make that comparison. It's, it's kind of the same. So, don't feel bad. You did what we asked you to do, and we should be better public servants because of it.
Make him. Lighter? Yes, Councilor Barlow.
I, I too understand the need for additional revenue for the city of Las Vegas. And as I drove around this weekend and received the hundreds of emails, vote no, vote no, vote no, I noticed something that, that really, I had an opportunity to pay attention to. At the corner of Cheyenne and Jones, there's a Vons at their location. And there's big signs outside of Vons that says, "Closing fifty percent off this weekend." And on the eighteenth, that Vons will be closed. And so, I went inside and I asked the, the employees there, "So, what's going on?" They says, "Well, Vons is closing approximately twelve of their stores around the valley." Then, as I drove on my way handling business, I passed another Vons at the corner of Camino, Camino El Norte and Craig, and the same sign on that Vons, "Closing on the eighteenth of July." It really opened my eyes to the fact that the commercial businesses in this valley will be suffering. I know how much the community in which I represent in historical West Las Vegas suffered when the Vons closed at their location for four and a half years prior to BiLLO Market coming on board, which I and my constituents in that area are very grateful for. And now, other communities will basically suffer from not having a grocery store, it being impacted specifically with the grocers being the anchor tenants in many of the commercial centers, and imposing additional fees at this time for those tenants who are in those centers where big box stores are closing down. Needless to say, at Rampart in Charleston, in the Boca Park, the number of big boxes that have closed in that development, in, in that commercial center as well, and many other commercial centers around the valley, we can't at this time, in my opinion, move forward with increasing the fees for those smaller businesses because they will, if they haven't already, they will be affected by the big boxes that drove a large portion of their customers in there due to the number of customers those big boxes attracted, which basically they receive the residual dollars from. So, at this time, I'm not amenable to move forward with the request. I do want to thank staff for a job well done in allowing us the opportunity to vet this process and realize that our projections of things getting better has not occurred yet. And looking at CNBC this morning, and the stock market, and the business community stating that it's still going down, the needle's still pointed down, I don't believe that we need to weigh in on that and provide that much more of an impact to businesses that are already affected and falling due to what's happening in the economy. So, I will not be in support of moving forward with this item as well. But thank you, staff, for a job well done as far as giving us the opportunity to allow us to tee it up and see how far we can hit this ball. But I'm not willing to hit this ball today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Cry. Cry, Ms. Fretwell. Yeah. This, this, this is the time. Don't worry about me. Cry because the council gave you a mandate. We said, "Find out ways we could raise money because we know that our income isn't going to be able to cover our expenses." And Mr. DiFiore went out and he worked out a very fair, and I think everybody has to say, this is a very fair bill as far as its terms are concerned, particularly if we take the CPI out, at regular times, a hundred dollar fee or five hundred dollar fee wouldn't bother anybody. The past nine years before we got into this economic mess, this wouldn't even be an issue. You wouldn't even be concerned about this. But you make a point that much of this is a principle. There'll be some people who feel the hundred. World Market Center's not going to feel the five hundred. They know that. They're candid enough to say that. But cry because this is the first time that we're really having this discussion in a public forum where something counts rather than trying to give staff a direction. You should cry because unless we find ways, and gentlemen, you're part of this community, and I hope you help us find ways. That's our job. We're the elected officials, but we're not magicians. We have to find ways to raise revenue in order to meet our expenses, or else the services that we provide to all the folks in our community are going to begin to erode, and it's going to be like a, a stone going downhill gathering moss. And before you know it, people are going to feel just as violated as perhaps some of you did when you went through this process, when their parks are closed, and when the swimming pools are closed, and when the senior centers are closed, and when the Fertitta Center is closed, and there are ten thousand people walking around at two o'clock in the morning looking for someplace to provide, to get services that they need, that they've asked for, that we promised them we would give them. We've got to find ways to raise money. Now, I understand where everybody on this council's coming from. We're trying to make a statement that we want to be business friendly. We don't want to be oppressive. We don't want to impose a further burden on a segment of our society that is fully burdened at this time and hasn't even felt what's coming. What's coming is going to be like a tsunami as far as commercial real estate. And we don't want to cause any additional problems as a city. And I understand where Councilman Ross is coming from and the other council members, and making their position clear that they want this to die today, but it's not going to die. The bill is going to die, but the problem's not going to die. The, the problem is going to be exacerbated. It's going to be magnified. It's going to be, unless we come up with answers, it's going to be a horror show. Because that's seven hundred thousand dollars, even though it seems like peanuts, which we would have gotten. That's going to be seven jobs of city employees, seven people who are going to be providing services who will, no longer will be providing those services. That's the way we have to think of the future, men and ladies. So, if, we're going to give the staff direction to, to figure out ways to address these issues, we have to realize that there are going to be casualties. We, we, we have to be more discerning, perhaps. This is the first test of us, and I understand where everybody's coming from. And I don't want to send out a, a, a message that we don't want these businesses to survive. But everybody is going to be affected each and every time we have to go through this exercise here. So, cry, but recognize that tomorrow you have to go out and you have to find other ways that we could raise revenue so we can meet these expenses. But today, you can cry. All right. There's a motion to let this, what do you call it?
Well, I said, "Let it die," but I think the proper terminology, we've moved to strike this agenda item.
All right. Let's vote. Strike. Post. Motion carries. It's not a win, man. Those who spoke to us, this was not a win for you today. This was perhaps a loss for the city in the long run. But please, if you have, if you're smarter than we are, please come forward with ideas for us. And I'm talking to anybody who's watching this, who's listening to us, please, if you have suggestions, we will listen to every one of them, but we have to get the answers as to how we're going to get over this period of time and keep on making the city the great city that it is. We have to keep it there. So, if you have something, please bring it to our attention. I mean that very seriously. All right.
If I could.
Yes.
I'd like to recall item fifty, please.
Haven't we been there?
You have seen.
I was going to make that same recommendation. I know that the people showed up for the one o'clock hearing. If it were recalled right now, we can dispense with it. You won't have to call it this afternoon.
Item fifty, Your Honor, was public hearing and possible action to consent to approve the insurance of private activity bonds by the Industrial Development Authority of the County of Puma Era, Puma Metro Police Facility leased revenue bond, Series two thousand nine subordinate, Series two thousand nine, be to finance proposed Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Headquarters to be located at the northwest corner of Martin Luther King Boulevard and out the drive. The mayor abstained, and Councilman Barlow abstained, and Councilman Anthony disclosed that he was a retired police officer. We didn't feel like you'd have any conflict in, in voting on this item. And so, we're going to have staff explain, I guess. The city attorney is going to explain to us what we're doing here today.
Very good. We opened a public hearing this morning, Mr. Mayor Protem. Because we had continued this item until one o'clock this afternoon out of an abundance of caution, if individuals left prior to making public comment this morning, this would be an opportunity for them to come forward and be heard at this public hearing. So, if anyone is present who was not heard this morning regarding this item, this is an opportunity to speak. And if there are none, Mr. Mayor Protem, you just merely need to close the public hearing, and we're done.
Is there anyone here who wants to speak on this item? Send them on the closer.
Mayor Protem, if I can just enter my appearance for the record so that I was here to answer any questions that anyone might have, should they appear at one o'clock.
I, I, I have to abstain, but you wanted to say so I can make a fee.
No, they, they know, they know our bill in it anyway. I just want, seriously, the record is clear that they, we were here to answer questions should there be any questions.
We, we appreciate that, Mr. Kemper.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Yes, just for a point of clarification, you mentioned that I abstained on the last, on this item.
Did I say you?
Yes, sir. I just want to be clear that it was Councilman Ross.
Yes, I'm sorry. Excuse my apology.
All right, sir. Just so that Mr. Kemper will have a clean record.
Is there anyone else here who wants to speak on this item? Here no one. We'll close this item. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kemper.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, members of the council.
All right. Item number seventy-seven, which is bill number two thousand nine dash twenty-six, provides alternative minimum on-site parking requirements for certain mixed-use developments and other qualifying uses. Councilman Ross, do you wish to have a read?
Please, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman. Bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-six in order to provide alternative minimum on-site parking requirements for certain mixed-use developments and other qualifying uses and to provide for other related matters.
And Councilman Ross, your motion, please.
Motion to, motion to approve.
All right. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seventy-eight is bill number two thousand nine dash twenty-seven, updates the municipal code provision pertaining to the meeting schedule of the Traffic and Parking Commission. Councilman, do you wish to have a read?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
And Councilman, bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-seven, in order to update the municipal code provision pertaining to the meeting schedule for Traffic and Parking Commission and provide for other related matters.
All right. And Councilman, your motion, please.
I move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item seventy-nine is bill number two thousand nine dash twenty-eight, readopts Las Vegas Municipal Code ten point oh-two-point-oh-one-oh to make state misdemeanors, city misdemeanors, if committed within the city. Councilman Ross, would you like to have a read?
Please, Your Honor.
Thank you. And Councilman, bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-eight, in order to readopt the municipal code provision, making state law misdemeanors, city misdemeanors, if committed within the city.
And your motion, please.
Motion, move to approve, Your Honor.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Items eighty-one through eighty-three, bills two thousand nine dash twenty-nine through two thousand nine dash thirty-one are eligible for adoption at later meetings, so we're going to move on to new bills. New bills, items eighty-four, bill two thousand nine dash thirty-three, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, August the fourth, two thousand nine. Would you please read that?
With glad to your honor, bill number twenty-nine dash twenty-three, in order to revise zoning regulations governing small and wind energy systems and providing for other related matters.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow, will you be available on August the fourth?
Yes.
Thank you. And Councilman Anthony, will you be available?
Yes, sir.
Then I'll sign this bill for you to review. We'll now go on to item eighty-five, and could I have a motion to strike that, please?
So moved, Your Honor.
All right. Please vote on that. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. We're going to be in recess until, what do you think, ten after, ten after two? Does that sound okay to everybody? Let's say until a quarter after two. Thank you for being patient with us. I appreciate it. We'll call item eighty-six. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or the advocate wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have items ninety-nine through one oh-two, variance thirty-two six forty, variance thirty-three oh fifteen, special estimate thirty-two six thirty-nine, and site development review thirty-two six thirty-eight. Advocate Metropolitan Homes owner, Asani Razia, and Sarahhan Ganay, two point sixteen acres. acres adjacent to the west side of Decatur Boulevard, approximately one thousand feet south of Lakeview Boulevard. The applicant would like that to be held in abeyance until the August nineteenth, two thousand nine meeting. Item one oh four is a special use permit thirty-four oh sixteen. Advocate Clear Wireless LLC owner, LXT four LLC, appeal filed from the denial by the Planning Commission, five sixty feet, five hundred and sixty feet north of Meadows Lane and approximately five hundred and thirty feet east of Decatur Boulevard. Uh, the applicant would like that to be held in abeyance until our August the fifth, two thousand nine meeting. Items one oh five, six, and seven, variance thirty-four oh eight, special use permit thirty-four zero zero six, and site development review thirty-four zero one, one zero. Advocate American West Petroleum owner, Fam Capital LLC, zero point five eight acres at the southwest corner of Sahara Avenue and Valley View Boulevard. The applicant would like that to be held in abeyance until our August the nineteenth, two thousand and eight, meet, nine meeting. Item one oh eight is RQR thirty-three seven thirty-eight. Advocate Randy Black owner, FM and Nancy L. Corrigan Trust, nine twenty-one North Buffalo Drive. Uh, this is in Councilman Anthony's ward and he requests that to be held in abeyance until our August the fifth, two thousand nine meeting. And items one oh nine and one oh ten, our special use permit thirty-two, uh, five, five five five, site development review thirty-four, two fifty-four, and they want that to be held until our, uh, August the ninth, uh, two thousand nine meeting. Are there any other items we need to report at this time? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to bring these items forward, take the appropriate action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Items eighty-seven through ninety-one are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development. May I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda, items eighty-seven through ninety-one?
Yes, your honor, with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Items ninety-two through ninety-eight may be considered in one motion, one vote. They are considered routine public hearing items with no condition changes. All public hearing items will be opened at one time and any person representing an application or a member of the public or member of the council not in agreement with the conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have them, that item removed from this portion of the agenda. Now, does anybody know whether or not they want to pull items ninety-two through ninety-eight at this point? All right, hearing none, I'll read them all into the record. Ninety-two is SUP three four three three nine. Advocate owners Trinity Peak One LLC at Al. Request for a special use permit for proposed mixed-use development with a waiver to allow a non-residential use to front along the interior drive instead of the primary public right-of-way at the northeast corner of Trinity Peak Drive and Buffalo Drive and Ward Four. Ninety-three is SUP three four two six seven. The applicant is Wayne Higdon. The owner is Les and Stanley Quoc. Request for a special use permit for an auto repair garage major at thirty-four twenty-five North Rancho Drive, suite number one twenty in Ward Six. Ninety-four is RQR three four three two four. The applicant is CBS Outdoor, Inc. The owner is City Parkway four A, Inc. Required review of a previously approved variance which allowed a fourteen-foot by forty-eight-foot off-premise illuminated sign six hundred and ninety feet from another existing off-premise sign where seven hundred and fifty feet is the minimum separation allowed on five point two eight acres on the north side of US ninety-five between Bonanza Road and Grand Central Parkway, one hundred and fifty west of the center line of the Union Pacific Railroad tracks in Ward Five. Ninety-five is RQR three four three two one. The applicant is Clear Channel Outdoor, Inc. The owner Bartis Mary thirteen LLC. Required review of a previously approved special use permit for a fourteen-foot by forty-eight-foot off-premise sign which replaced a twelve-foot by twenty-four-foot sign on five point oh six acres of thirty-nine forty-one North Rancho Drive and Ward Six. Ninety-six is RQR three four three two seven. The applicant is Nevada Power Company. The owner US Department of Interior, Bureau of Land Management. Required review of a previously approved review of condition that allowed the deferment of the required landscaping along the east, north, and west sides of the site on property located adjacent to the northwest corner of Iron Mountain Road and Decatur Boulevard in Ward Six. Ninety-seven is VAC three four two oh nine. The applicant owner is Cox Communications, Las Vegas, Inc. Petition to vacate a portion of an existing twenty-foot wide drainage easement generally located on the west side of Stella Lake Street, fifteen feet north of the Wheeler Peak Drive in Ward Five. Ninety-eight is VAC three four three oh seven. The applicant owner is two five seven five South Island Drive LP. Request to vacate a twenty-one hundred thirty-one square foot portion of Island Drive located approximately two hundred and seventy-five feet northeast of Sutter Avenue in Ward One. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval for each of these items. Items ninety-two through ninety-eight are public hearing items which I now declare open. Would anyone want to be heard on any of them?
Douglas Crook, five two seven five South Durango Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, eight nine one one three. Just representing Trinity Peak, number, item number ninety-two, was wondering what happened to item number ninety-one as part of this?
We're, we're trying to find that out right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I, I.
Right, because you had read it in, Mayor, with, with the one motion, I'm sorry, with the consent item, so.
Yeah, we, we read it with consent.
All right.
I caught this. Read it with consent.
Okay, then I'll read it here as part of the one motion, one vote, correct? All right, DOT three four three three eight, non-public hearing, extension of time, site development plan review. The applicant is D two lost. The owner is Trinity Peak One LLC. Request for an extension of time of a previously approved major modification to an approved site development plan review for a proposed mixed-use development consisting of four hundred and thirty-six residential units and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and seventy-two square feet of commercial space on twenty-one point two acres at the northeast corner of Buffalo Drive and Trinity Peak Drive, and this is in Ward Four. That is part of the one motion, one vote. Public hearing on that as well. Thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. All right, anybody else want to be heard on any of these items? All right, hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion to approve items ninety-one through ninety-eight, please?
Yes, your honor, we can make, make a motion to approve items ninety-one through ninety-eight, following staff's recommendation and with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now turn to item one oh three. Item one oh three is SUP three four oh one four, special use permit. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant owner is Easy Pawn Nevada, Inc. Request for a major amendment to an approved special use permit for a sixteen hundred and fifty-six square foot expansion of an existing pawn shop with a waiver to allow a zero-foot separation from a parcel zone for residential use where two hundred feet is required at twenty-two hundred South Rainbow Boulevard. This is in Ward One. The Planning Commission and staff both recommend an approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which I now declare open.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Bill Curran with the firm Ballard Spa. One hundred City Parkway is our address. In two thousand and five, city council originally approved pawn shop at this location. It has been successful. My client wishes to expand not as display area but as storage area into a storefront that was previously vacant. We've, there were some protests filed. Councilwoman Tarkanian suggested we have a neighborhood meeting. We have that. She attended it. I'm not aware that there are any continuing protests. I think there was just some question about the way the notice had been worded that frightened people.
Very good. All right, are there any questions of Mr. Curran? Folks, public hearing, if you'd like to be heard. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Mayor Protem.
Yes, your honor, make a motion to follow Planning Commission's staff's recommendation for approval of this item. All conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. One eleven and fifty-six. One eleven is SUP three four three three one, special use permit. It's going to be a public hearing. The applicant is L. Eric Culversen. The owner is Village Square Shopping Center LLC. Appeal filed from the denial by the Planning Commission of a request for a special use permit for a massage establishment with a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a residentially zoned property with four hundred feet is the minimum required and to allow a zero-foot distance separation from two existing massage establishments where one thousand feet is the minimum required at ninety-four forty West Sahara Avenue, suite two fifteen, this is in Ward Two. And this is going to be heard in conjunction with item fifty-six from this morning. The Planning Commission and staff recommend denial. It's a public hearing which I now declare open. Fifty-six is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license. LPG TrainingUSA.com, do we visit that European face and body renewal at ninety-four forty West Sahara Avenue, suite two fifteen, in Ward Two. Is the applicant present? Anybody here on behalf of the owner, L. Eric Culversen, pardon me, the applicant, L. Eric Culversen, or the owner Village Square Shopping Center LLC? All right, Councilperson Wilson, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'm a little surprised that Mr. Culversen isn't here. The recommendation from staff and Planning Commission is for denial, but I certainly wanted to give him a chance to explain this business venture at our briefing yesterday. I think staff had no problems with at least a temporary permit. So my recommendation would be to obey this, this is going to be my motion, obey it to our August fifth council date, but could I ask staff to make contact with Mr. Culversen and ask him why he didn't show up today and if he's still interested in being considered?
We can certainly do that.
All right, thank you very much. That's the motion. Let's vote, please. That's on one eleven and one fifty-six, to obey both of them until August fifth. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item one twelve is SUP three four three three three, special use permit, a public hearing. The applicant is Colleen's Classic Consignment. The owner is Robert H. and Surviva Fisher Trust, uh, Sariva Fisher Trust, pardon me, now I know I know them. Request for a special use permit for twenty-one thousand twenty-five square foot second-hand dealer use furniture at fifteen forty South Rainbow Boulevard. It's in Ward One. The Planning Commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which I now declare open. I did not realize that Ms. Fisher has an interest in this. My children are very, very good friends with her and her husband. I know that, well, them socially, but I don't see that that would affect my judgment nor my ability to be able to vote here. All right. Yes, sir.
Joshua Cohen, I'm the, I'm Colleen's commercial real estate agent, representing her. Business address thirty-nine ten South Pecos Road.
Okay.
Hi, I am Colleen Aiken, and I am excited about being able to open up another store that I actually own this time. I've been in the city of Las Vegas for fifteen years, and I think that I've done a really nice job with consignment furniture, and I'm excited about moving over to my own building.
Very good. Ms. Fisher, you want to identify yourself with the record, please?
Sure, sure. I'm sorry. Hi, I'm Sariva Fisher, and our property is at fifteen forty South Rainbow Boulevard, and we have an Ethan Allen store there and looking for Colleen to put her consignment store in there.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions of the gentlemen or the ladies?
Yes, your honor. Colleen, if you don't mind, I'm just kind of curious, this is going to be your second store, is that what you said?
Actually, I have a store right now in Henderson, and I'm on Cheyenne and Rainbow right now in the city, and I'm going to be moving that. I have eight more months, and then I'm moving into the Ethan Allen location.
Okay, my question is basically, these are tough times, you know that probably as well as anybody, but you seem to be doing okay.
I'm doing very well.
Is it because of the type of product that you're offering, you think? Is there, is there a better market for items on consignment in a recessionary time versus times of wealth and prosperity?
Actually, I would say that my sales are probably as well as before the recession started. I wouldn't say I'm making much more with the economy, but I'm consistently selling at the same dollar amount that I have for the last fifteen years, really. I've been really lucky. I have a very good rep, I think I have a good reputation anyway in the city, so.
All right, good for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Folks, public hearing, if you'd like to be heard. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then. And this is Mayor Protem on behalf of Councilman.
Yes, I'll make a motion to follow staff's recommendation and planning commission's recommendation for approval of this item, and just wish you good luck over on Rainbow.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Good luck to you.
Thank you guys too. Appreciate you.
All right. Madam Clerk, I'd instruct you to, to please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abeyance.
Thank you.
Very good. And I'm going to call out of order. We'll have the citizens' participation first and then we'll have the council comments if they so desire second. So item one fifteen is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please step up here, give us your name, we'll put a three-minute timer on. Anybody want to be heard? Citizens' participation? You look like you want to be heard. Going once, going twice. All right, we'll go on to council member recognition. Would any member of the council like to be recognized at this time?
Yes, please, real quick.
Yes.
I'd like to invite Ward Three constituents to join me along with the mayor and the staff from the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, is celebrating National Night Out on August the fourth. In Ward Three, they were, we're going to have three different locations. One at Tuscany Apartments at twenty-three twenty Tam Drive from five to seven. Mayor Goodman along with Deputy Chief Gary Schofield and Captain Jewick will be there. The Charleston Apartments and staff from the Downtown Air Command, Captain Darcy at twenty-nine hundred Charleston Boulevard from seven to nine. And Encanta, Encana Apartments, this partying with Sunrise Acres Elementary School at four oh one North Twenty-eighth Street from six thirty to eight thirty. Invite each, each and every one of the residents following, watching today to please come out and join us on National Night Out.
All right, any other comments?
Yes, Mayor Goodman. Seems like Mayor Goodman's going to be making his rounds that night. I would also like to invite anybody from Ward Two and just the surrounding area out in the western end of the city to join me August fourth, two thousand and nine. That is the National Night Out that is celebrated all throughout this country and obviously here locally in Las Vegas. In Ward Two, our National Night Out will be at six o'clock. It's out at the Lakes Community off Sahara and, Lake Sahara, actually, and the mayor has kindly said that he'll make an appearance with Sheriff Doug Gillespie, Fire Chief Greg Gammon, and a lot of other community participants. And it's just a great opportunity for people that live in this local area of our community to come out and meet your community leaders, and there'll be vendors out there offering their wares and just a good time for all. So once again, August fourth, six o'clock, out at the lakes.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Yes, and I would also like to invite the entire Ward Five to National Night Out, out at the Doolittle Community Center as well on August fourth. So come out and enjoy yourself, and Mayor, we look forward to seeing you do your rounds. And I would like to thank the Bolden Area Command, Denise Stride, and Captain Neville for a job well done with National Night Out, bringing it back into West Las Vegas, Doolittle Community Center. Thanks, sir.
Okay, make sure to, tell my office, okay, please?
I'm sorry?
Tell my office to put it on my schedule, please.
Oh, no doubt.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Anthony?
And last but not least, National Night Out in Ward Four will be held at the Desert Shores Community Center, and we're going to have the same participants and a fun night.
I hope, I, I hope it's not a hot night, let's put it that way. I'm going to go over to Bat of Tossos and get that wax piece of me, start schlepping it around.
Just stay out, just stay out. You're good, buddy.
No, right. Not too much gin. Okay, the Saturday night at the Fifty Ones bobblehead night, it's the greatest bobblehead of me ever. It's my thirteenth bobblehead. This one has me with a showgirl. It's really very, very special, and it's as cool as it gets. So I think it's the first twenty-five hundred people who, first twenty-five hundred people who go there will get a free bobblehead. And then my birthday party, which will be down on the Fremont Street Experience, that's the thirty-first. Whole city's invited, more than you can drink, more than you can eat, plenty of entertainment. It's going to be a lot of fun. Hope everybody is there.
How old are you going to be on July thirty-first?
Thirty-five. We have a guest, we have a guest here with us. We're past citizens' participation, but we'd like to welcome former councilman and now county commissioner Lawrence Weekly. Commissioner, how are you?
Just wanted to go over a couple of things with you real quick, if you don't mind. Is that okay?
It's not agendized, so I guess it's okay.
No, it's not agendized. It's okay. First item, Mayor, is I wanted to bring to your attention, and I'd like to pass these pictures up to you for the record, please. At your previous council meeting, you directed your staff to go after the county in reference to a piece of parcel that we have downtown the old courthouse building.
Right.
Which is in my district. And as a part of Councilman Barlow's Ward Five Clean Coalition campaign, we truly want to be a part of that as well, and definitely don't want to be a detriment to all of the great work that you all are doing here at the city of Las Vegas. And so if I can, for the record, want to submit this for the record.
I hear it's remarkable.
Absolutely, and we want to thank Betsy Brettwell, city manager, very much for her hard work and as well as Steve Harson, who has been working with Virginia Valentine, our manager, to make sure that we do our part to not contribute to the detriment of downtown and you all's efforts in trying to clean it up and move forward in what it is you're trying to accomplish here. That's number one. So thank you, Betsy, very much, and we do appreciate.
Can we put it on the overhead because I hear this is a remarkable improvement?
Well, it's several pictures, Mayor, and so, I mean, my first time before you guys, so I'm not really sure.
A little nervous, right?
All right. Actually, I'm a little winded. I had to run, and they told me you guys were almost done, so tried to catch you here. So, Betsy, if one of you guys can help me with these photos, that'd be great. And if I could just quickly go into another area of concern that I have, just wanted to bring to your attention, and it's an item that you all were going to have on your agenda today, and I understand that the item was taken off of this agenda not to be heard today but will be considered at a later date. I do want to bring to your attention that there are several of us in the community all across the valley who are kind of very concerned about, I'm sorry, excuse me, Margot, very concerned about the decision that has been rendered in terms of Lorenzi Park tennis courts. And, Mayor, we hope that you all would really stop and take a look at that. We appreciate Councilman Barlow. It's not on your agenda today.
No, we're looking at each other with, I don't know anything about it.
Well, it's, you know, a couple of weeks ago, Councilman Barlow had a beautiful grand reopening of Lorenzi Park. And as you all know, when I was very fortunate to be here to work with you all as a council, we were very fortunate to work with the manager's office, Chris Knight, and members of the staff to help us acquire a twenty-five million dollar Snipola grant. And at that time, they told us twenty-five million was nothing good enough but a good parking lot. And we were able to design the park, redesign the park, and make it something that's extremely beautiful and make it a real place that people can come out and recreate in. As I indicated, Councilman Barlow, along with Billy, Billy from Parks and Recs, man, they put on a great show for the community. Thousands of residents came out and had a wonderful, wonderful time that Independence Day weekend. But the concerns that we have is the gentleman who operated the tennis courts had been there for years, Mayor. As a matter of fact, Craig was there for over twelve years, and he just did a great job of making those tennis courts as in horrible shape as they were at Man's State. And he worked diligently over there to bring people who would have never come in eight-nine-one-oh-six to work in this community and teach children tennis. And there are a number of city of Las Vegas employees who, who take lessons under this man and, and would come over there under those conditions that that park was in. Well, when we decided to close that park down because we redesigned those tennis courts, he was moved over to the Buffalo Park temporarily. Now, since then, he was told that it was going to go out to an RFP. And I can just tell you, Mayor, it's just how the whole process went was wrong on every